It's five o'clock. And we have a quorum. I don't know where Mr. Knoblock is. What's that? It's Duffy. Okay, so it's five o'clock. Welcome to the regular meeting of the San Clemente City Council. This is business meeting, part one. It'll start 5:00 P.M. City Clerk, do we have, are we being serenaded by the San Clemente High School Madrigals this evening?
Yes, they should be.
They should be entering the room, San Clemente High School Madrigals. They were practicing outside just a moment ago.
Got it. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
It's the most wonderful time of the year. When the kids jingle belling and everyone's telling you be of good cheer. It's the most wonderful time of the year. It's the happiest season of all. With those holiday greetings and gay happy meetings when friends don't too cold. It's the happiest season of all. There'll be parties for hosting marshmallows, for toasting and caroling out in the snow. There'll be scary ghost stories and tales of the glories of Christmases long, long ago. It's the most wonderful time of the year. There'll be mushrooms so towing and hearts will be glowing when loved ones are near. It's the most wonderful time of the year. There'll be parties for hosting marshmallows, for toasting and caroling out in the snow. There'll be scary ghost stories and tales of the glories of Christmases long, long ago. Long ago. It's the most wonderful time of the year. There'll be mushrooms so towing and hearts will be glowing when loved ones are near. It's the most wonderful time. It's the most wonderful time. It's the most wonderful time of the year.
The last song, welcome to you all, is the Christmas song, or it's more commonly known as Christmas.
There's much roasting on an open fire. Jack Frost nipping at your rose. Newtide carols being sung by a choir full dressed up like a skin horse. Everybody knows a turkey and some mistletoe help to make the season right. Tiny tots with their eyes all aglow will find it hard to sleep tonight. They know that Santa's on his way. Yes, he's on his way. He's loaded lots of toys and goodies on his sleigh. And every mother's child is gonna spy to see if reindeer really know how to fly. And so, I'm offering this simple praise to kids from one to ninety-two. Although it's been said many times, many ways, Merry Christmas to you. They know that Santa's on his way. He's loaded lots of toys and goodies on his sleigh. And every mother's child is gonna spy to see if reindeer really know how to fly. And so, I'm offering this simple praise to kids from one to ninety-two. Although it's been said many times, many ways, Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. Merry, Merry Christmas to you. Merry Christmas.
Nice. Very good. So, before you leave, it was so wonderful. Can each of you identify yourself? Give us your name so we know who you are. Real quick.
I'm Brooke.
Hi, I'm Liza.
Hi, Nicole.
I'm Tess.
I'm Castro.
I'm Sergio.
I'm Tyler.
I'm Davilio.
I'm Abby.
Morgan.
Haley.
I'm Hala.
My name's Reeve.
And let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you very much. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, we have the, we have the, we have the invocation. Mr. Croft? Please stand.
Our Father, we're grateful in this Christmas season and the holiday times to be able to celebrate and to come together with the spirit, both of Thanksgiving and of gifting. We're grateful for this great place in which we live, for the city of San Clemente, and for the great planet upon which Thou hast created and placed us, that we can enjoy these amazing experiences here. Part of Thy plan. We're grateful, Heavenly Father, for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country. And we ask for a continued blessing upon the leaders and the people that live here, and that we can extend those freedoms and that we can use them to the best of our abilities. We're grateful for the local leaders here that dedicate their time and energy to bettering the lives of the members of this city. We ask a blessing upon the proceedings herein, that we may see that Thy will is performed and that the works of justice are continued forward. Grateful, Heavenly Father, for these many things and for the blessings which Thou bestowest upon us day by day. And we do offer up this prayer in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ the Lord.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing. Judge Connolly, can you, can you approach the speaker, the microphone, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Yes, next item on the agenda is election results. Administration of Oath of Allegiance and Election of Office of Mayor and Mayor Pro tempore. So with that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, a general municipal election was held in San Clemente on November 8th, 2022, for the purpose of electing three members to the city council, with terms to expire in November 2026 and to submit two measures to the electorate, allowing the electorate to vote on whether the offices of City Clerk and City Treasurer should be appointed. The election was consolidated with the County of Orange. The ballots were counted and the results canvassed and certified by the Orange County Register of Voters. The voter turnout for this election was 66.2 percent with a total of 29,672 ballots cast. Victor Cabral, Mark Inmire, and Steve Knoblock were the candidates that received the highest number of votes. Major U relating to Office of City Clerk passed by a majority vote and will take effect in November 2024. The results of Major U were 13,746 voting in favor and 12,064 in opposition. Major V relating to the Office of City Treasurer passed by a majority vote and will take effect in November 2024. The results of this election were 13,201 voting in support and 12,704 voting in opposition. At this time, I request that you adopt the resolution reciting the fact of the general municipal election held in the city on November 8th, declaring the results as such and other such matters as required by law.
I move that we adopt Resolution 42-42 entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held in the city on November 8th, 2022, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law.
Second. Motion by Knoblock, second by Duncan. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. City Clerk?
Okay. Mayor, we've got some commendations for you. Would you like to start without going? Councilmember Kathy Ward?
Right. Are we gonna do the comments or the recognition? How do you want to do this?
We can do recognition first.
And then comments.
And then comments. Yes.
How are we doing that?
Are we, are we going?
You can come up to the podium. We should have Councilmember Ward right there.
Laura, do I go up first?
Yes.
So it's noteworthy, the Councilmember Ferguson is absent this evening, but she would be getting recognized this evening as well. I'll say a few words about Councilmember Ferguson.
Excuse me for interrupting. Mayor, Councilwoman Ferguson did ask, she sent me a brief statement, asked if I would read that on her behalf at this time, so I can do that later or now if you prefer.
Let's go ahead. You can do it from my side.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ferguson asked me to read this comment. First of all, in her comment, she thanks me for reading on her behalf, and she says, "Though I'm excited to be starting a new job today, I regret that it has kept me from being here. It's been my highest honor to serve the citizens of San Clemente. Thank you for your trust in me to be your voice at times and at times fight on your behalf. I've had good fortune to meet many amazing people during my tenure who used their voices, intellect, courage, and grit to bring positive change to our city. I'm very proud to have worked for you and with you. I'm proud of our accomplishments and the challenges we faced together. We made a difference. Transparency was the cornerstone of my work on the city council, and though some progress was made, more needs to be done. I encourage the new council to make transparency a priority, as government must always be accountable to the people, and transparency is absolutely necessary to guarantee good government. In closing, I thank God for being there for me and giving me the courage to challenge the status quo and for the strength to keep going. I would also like to express my heartfelt gratitude for the tremendous assistance of lawyers like Mike Winstead, Craig Alexander, Brad Malamud, Wayne Tate, Michael Colombo, and the Delian Law Group, and my council colleague and friend Steve Knoblock for bringing my, for being my ally on the dais, the Orange County GOP, and the countless residents, friends, and family members who have supported me throughout my term. You all, you all know who you are, and I sincerely appreciate you lending a helping hand, especially when times were tough. I wish our new city council their very best and wish everyone in San Clemente abundance and blessing this holiday season and always."
Thank you.
That concludes your comments.
So I would just like to follow up with that. There's no doubt Councilmember Ferguson was committed to all those things that she just articulated there. Transparency, open government, and wish her nothing but the very best going forward. So with that, I would like to have a round of applause for Ms. Ferguson. Councilmember Ward, I don't think anyone drove me crazy like you have.
Dada.
Let me. Earlier tonight, she said, "I'm the funniest council member she has encountered." And I said, "That's because you thought I was so unfunny before I was on council." So, the city of San Clemente, whereas Kathy Ward lives in San Clemente with her husband Greg, and during that time has demonstrated love for San Clemente, and whereas in evidence of her unselfish devotion to public service, Kathy Ward was elected to the San Clemente City Council in 2014 and was re-elected as city council in 2018. And whereas in December 2016, and again in December 2020, the San Clemente City Council validated its confidence in Kathy Ward by electing her to the office of mayor. And whereas, in addition to serving on the San Clemente City Council, Kathy Ward served on many regional committees, including the Orange County Fire Authority, the Transportation Corridor Agency, Orange County Transportation Authority, and the Wall of Recognition. And whereas prior to Kathy Ward's two terms on city clerk, on city council, she served the city on planning commission. Whereas after eight years on the city council, Kathy Ward decided not to seek reelection, and consequently, her term of service as a member of the city council will come to a close on December 6, 2022. Now therefore, I, Gene James, Mayor of the city of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the entire city council and all the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend and thank Kathy Ward for her distinguished service on behalf of the people of the San Clemente and do furthermore with her continued success as she embarked on the next chapter of her life. Congratulations. Additionally, the other thing Kathy will get is this tile. The city of San Clemente tile presented to Kathy Ward, member of the city council, December 2014 to December 2022. Ms. Ward, do you have anything to say? I'm sure you do.
Actually, not, not all that much. I wrote it down just because I know I would get turned around and forget someone. I am just a long line of council members, as all of you are. The city started in 1928, formed by a dream that our city was, we could live here in this beautiful area better than anywhere else in the, in the nation, I think. And there's many of us that have stood for this city and have fought so hard to, to keep that dream alive and, and to, to realize that dream. And, and I think we've done it. We're gonna be 100 years old in 2028. And so I charge the council and the residents to be ready for that 100 years, so that we're ready and the city is what it intended to be in, in, in 1928. I wanted to thank staff. We have a professional staff. The integrity of the city managers that we have had. And I just want to thank all the staff for all the work you do. You go into public service. That's what your job is. And you've got that, you guys have that down in spades. And I just thank you for the time that you have given me and the help that you have given us in the fight that we've had. Scott Smith, I have to say thank you to you. Total integrity, the work that we have done in the last eight years for the city of San Clemente has just been outstanding. And I have enjoyed every single minute of it, including working on the transportation corridor agencies, which I'm sure the mayor will agree to. We couldn't have done it without you and without our, our staff. All of our staff worked on that. I have to say thank you to my family, because I know they're watching. I tell them always not to watch the council meetings, but they are. So I just want to say thank you, and our, our family all serves with us, and the residents need to know that. And I especially need to thank my husband, who is here tonight, because he made it all possible to do this job. And I'm hoping I didn't forget anyone. To the council and to the new council members, congratulations. And I want the council to be successful, because we all need you to be successful. Now that I'm a resident too, we all want the same thing. And so I wish all of you good luck, and you will now represent the residents of San Clemente. And I wish you well. So thank you very much.
I thought she was gonna cry for a moment.
Yeah, only when I talk about my husband.
Yeah, photo, yeah.
Flowers?
For Laura. So staff, you're gonna have to grab those. There's flowers on the dais that need to, okay.
You're out of office. Stop directing people.
No, no, no. I just, for the new council members. Wait a minute, wait.
Turn the plug.
Hold on. Will you hold one?
I'm gonna hold one for you.
We should know how to do this, because we've done this for everyone else. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good meeting.
Kathy, there are some comments for.
Oh, let's, let's, let's do the comments.
Where should I be?
We'll be right here.
You can stand there if you'd like. I'll start with reading just a couple of comments that I received for people that could not be here. Dear Councilmember Ward, thank you for your service to us, the residents of San Clemente. You always put residents first, and we appreciated your valiant efforts. You worked hard under trying conditions and were always the voice of reason during those many dysfunctional city council meetings. The, the messes others made in the cast of unsavory characters you had to deal with were unprecedented. You soldiered through. Thank you. Pam and I can't be here tonight to express our thanks in person, but we ask our new city clerk to read this letter into the public record. Sincerely, Bob and Pam Baker. And Vonnie Barnes. Tom and Vonnie Barnes send our sincere appreciation to Kathy Ward for exceptional service on the city council. Kathy, thank you so very much. And then we do have some speaker cards. We'll start with Wayne Agelston.
You sound like Rice Krispies.
Put a cookie on the. Put a cookie on the podium. He'll hustle up. Kathy, you have to come over here. Thank you. Thank you so much. You have been the voice of reason and common sense. Thank you for your support for our historic character and our buildings in San Clemente. Thank you for our, uh, sign programs, so we don't look like a thrift city here in San Clemente. And most of all, thank you for what is, what will become your legacy here in San Clemente, which will be, every council member will have a legacy when they leave the City Council. And yours is saving us from the toll road. Thank you so much. If it hadn't been for you, Pat Bates, Scott, Scott Smith, thank you so much. Um, and, uh, it's just been terrific, and thank you so much, and that will be your legacy. And that's an incredible legacy that you will have. So, here's some flowers for you. Thank you so very much. Do appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
I only turned in one card tonight, but I want to congratulate Steve for his reelection, and, uh, Gene and Chris on continuing. But Kathy, I wanted to make sure that, uh, your time on the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board weren't forgotten, because, uh, you contributed a lot to the group, and we don't have many members left that, uh, were there when you were there. But Don was here, and, um, Wayne was there, and, uh, it was a great time, and, um, I think we went back to Leadership Land, San Clemente is where we first met, even before the stint on there, and I'd love to see that reinstated and, uh, brought back to, uh, prepare volunteers for our city to, um, do a good job. But, uh, I want to personally thank you for everything, and, uh, it was great working with you, and, uh, hope you don't disappear.
Next up is Amanda Q.
I have a presentation, please. Next slide, please. Um, this picture was taken by Director Kathy Ward at the April 2017 TCA Board of Directors meeting, um, way in the back there, and Ron Greek was speaking at the time. Fortunately, Kathy took a picture of this, because it really was the start of people coming and speaking out against the toll road and their destructive plans. Next slide, please. Uh, this was at the Public Forum on June 5th, 2017. Um, Kathy's there, you know, talking about the toll roads and cheering everybody on to fight for, for us. Next slide, please. And of course, there's Kathy there in center of the image, and just having a, just being very supportive and listening to everybody's concerns. Next slide, please. And this is the introduction of AB 382 by Assembly Rocky Chavez, and this was a big out, uh, big turnout at the Hermosa, at Mr. Hermosa Sports Park. And next slide, please. More pictures. Next slide, Rocky Chavez there. And, um, you know, sorry for the typo, Greg Ward. Sorry. And there he is cheering on, um, his wonderful life. Next slide, please. San Clemente Town Hall Meeting. Next slide, please. And, uh, meeting with not my toll road members, Bonnie Barnes, Laura Smith, Michelle Schumacher, myself, and of course Senator Bates there. Next slide, please. And then also speaking, um, at the Capistrani Unified School District meeting, which was on, I think, um, January 2019. Next slide, please. And this is just, just a recap of just a wonderful time. Next slide, please.
Good time.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward, for all your service, all, for these last eight years. And, um, I kind of got a little choked up there, because there was never, there's, it's been a great leadership, that there's been no one else that has, could lead hundreds of people, um, to fight against the toll road, against the TCA. I mean, there were hundreds of people there at the Public Forum who, who, um, went through First and Fourth Amendment violations, and, um, Greg and I were just talking recently, just a little, the start of the City Council meeting, and how the TCA, you know, violated our First and Fourth Amendment rights there. And, um, it's been a memorial, a great time, and, um, Laura Smith could not be here tonight, and, but, um, we had a great leader in you, and, um, fighting for all of San Clemente. Thank you very much, and I really appreciate all your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one comment to read in recognition of Joanne Bate and Kathy, so I want to get this in before Kathy leaves. San Clemente has been lucky in many respects. Not only do we live in a beautiful place by the beach and the Pacific Ocean, but we are also filled with amazing people. Tonight, we get to celebrate two of the best people in our small village. Mayor Ward has, Mayor Kathy Ward has served our city faithfully and with great passion during her tenure on City Council, and her service should be celebrated. She's shown a willingness to take on any issue, no matter how insignificant, and represent the people in all that she does. Her leadership on the toll road and her passion for community character have been hallmarks of her career. The residents of San Clemente are better off today because of Kathy Ward's tenure. I wish only the best to Kathy and Greg, as they enjoy their long-awaited and much-deserved retirement. Joanne Bate is an institution for the city of San Clemente. During my time on City Council, I came to appreciate her steady professionalism and vast knowledge of procedure and protocol as our City Clerk. I always knew that if I relied on Joanne's steady hand in council, things would end up just fine. She's overseen a period of tremendous change for the city of San Clemente, seen many changes in city leadership and council turnover, and has seen the city through some difficult times. Just like Kathy, I only wish the best for Joanne in the days ahead. Thank you, Joanne, for all you've done for our village. The residents of San Clemente owe you a debt of gratitude. Former Mayor Tim Brown. You have a card? Oh, is that Jo?
Thanks, Council.
First of all, I want to thank you all for, uh, making Laura our new City Clerk. Um, Joanne did a great job. I know Laura's going to do a great job, too. She's a real good representative for us. Um, years ago, I moved to San Clemente, about 40 years ago, and, uh, for 33 of those years, I wasn't involved at all with anything in the city. I didn't even know who the mayor was. I lived in Cypress Cove, and, uh, there's about 15 families in there. And, uh, we finally had a baby boy born there. I think he's here tonight. Mark Edmire, the first baby boy born in San Clemente. But anyhow, Mark, uh, congratulations. But, uh, if you could follow in Kathy's footsteps, that would be great. Um, I got involved with the city when, uh, we had, uh, bunch of things going on in our neighborhoods, uh, Neighborhood Watch, uh, I got in the Neighborhood Watch program. Uh, we had short-term lodging units, we had sober living homes and stuff. And one of the persons who championed our, uh, cause was Kathy. She always took care of our neighborhoods. She put us, uh, us all first, and, uh, we're all appreciative for that. So, uh, thanks a lot, Kathy.
That's it for Kathy.
You're not staying?
No.
Joanne. Did you proofread this? I have a few things to say about Joanne. You know, when you get elected to council or when you run for council, you think you know a lot. Quite honestly, you don't know too much. And when I saw the title, City Clerk, oh, what's, what's a City Clerk? Keeps track of the paperclips, you know? I, and little do you know, until you get involved in this building, how vital it is to have a City Clerk that is as detail-focused as Joanne Bate, and conducts her, conducts her duties in such a professional manner. I first encountered Joanne Bate when I first ran for election. And I have to admit, I'm not that detailed guy. Boy, did Joanne turn me into a detailed person. Every one of those documents had to be perfect, and she didn't leave you alone until they were perfect. There was no 90%. No, it was going to be 100%. And when she read your candidate statement, she's counting every word. And, um, I grew, well, initially, I didn't grow to appreciate it, but over time, I did grow to appreciate it, because I understood how important that role of City Clerk is. And like I said, until you're working in this building, until you get elected and spend some time with Joanne, you have no idea how important the things she, she focuses on, how important they are. And not only that, although Joanne can be that detailed person and persistent person, she always did it in a professional, non-threatening manner. So I appreciate that, Joanne. All right, couple things. City of San Clemente, whereas Joanne Bate lives in San Clemente, raised her three daughters in this city, and demonstrated a love for San Clemente through her tireless devotion as a city employee and an elected official. And whereas, by in evidence of the City Council's confidence in Joanne Bate, she was appointed by unanimous vote to the elected office of City Clerk in 2007. And whereas, in November 2008, Joanne Bate was elected by the electorate to the office of City Clerk, and went on to serve as an elected City Clerk until her retirement in November 2022. Whereas, in addition to serving in an elected capacity as City Clerk, Joanne Bate was a valued and dedicated city employee for 35 years. And whereas, after four terms as an elected City Clerk, Joanne Bate retired from office effective November the 18th, 2022. Now therefore, I, Gene James, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, California, acting on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend and thank Joanne Bate for her distinguished service on behalf of the people of San Clemente, and do furthermore wish her continued success as she embarks on the next chapter of her life. Signed, Gene James, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, dated this 6th day of December, 2022. Additionally, photos, photos, photos. Additionally, Joanne will get this tile from the City of San Clemente in recognition of all her service. And let me tell you what, it's only in recognition, because the things she has done have been truly remarkable. Thank you. Do we have some photos here? Okay, Joanne, it's your time to speak.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, well, if anyone had told me 36 years ago that I would be standing here today, um, actually being recognized for my service, I'd say, "There's no way." I was lucky enough back in 1986, when I decided, you know, that I, I did want a career. What I decided on is that I wanted a career with purpose. So I, um, decided to work for local government, because that's where the biggest difference is, in people's quality of life. I came to City, um, San Clemente with the promise that I would stay three years. I was young, I was upward, upwardly mobile, and three years sounded fair. But I stayed for 36. Why? It's not the beautiful beaches, it's not our beautiful architecture. It was the people. The people are amazing. I'm telling you, um, I'm so inspired. The people who give of their time to serve on the council are dedicated city staff, and the people who are so engaged in their community. I have seen people until almost 2:00 in the morning, but this chamber's filled, and it was beautiful. So I knew a good thing, and I stayed. And although I've done a lot of dumb things in my life, like most of us, the one thing that I will never regret was coming here. So, thank you all. Um, I wish the best. Congratulations to the new council members, to our new City Clerk, Laura Campanolo, to our new City Treasurer, Charlie Smith. Um, thank you all. Means so much. Thank you all.
And we do have a couple of speakers, Joanne. Wayne Agelston and Joe Anderson.
Joanne, you are an institution, and you have made significant, um, quality of life decisions for this, the residents of San Clemente. I was first elected to City Council in 1998, the last century, and, um, I was on for three terms. And every, every one of those terms, you helped me out tremendously, and I most appreciate it for that. So thank you so very much, and, um, we'll see you around town, I'm sure. And thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Here's some.
Well, good evening, Joanne. Uh, for those of you that I haven't met, I beat Agelston by 10 years. I was first elected in 1990, and, uh, served 16 years in this august body. Uh, anyhow, to get to the point. Joanne, I always found Joanne, in all those years, to be, first of all, very, very knowledgeable, as the mayor has stated, in the numerous, numerous, numerous nuances of state and local government. Additionally, I always found her to be accessible, and if she didn't have the answer to a question, she would get it in a quick and expeditious manner. Not only that, but she had a mind for detail that is above and beyond. Let me just give you one example. As public officials, there are all kinds of forms we have to fill out and deal with. One called, which I hated, the Statement of Economic Interest. So, in addition to my 16 years on the council, I also served on the Oversight Board. Here's a, here's one for you. The Oversight Board for the Dissolution of the San Clemente Redevelopment Agency. Talk about a bureaucratic name. Anyway, we would have to fill out this form, the Statement of Economic Interest. Basically, as a public official, you have to state, you know, your assets, your income, your, anything you buy and sell during the year, and so on and so forth. Well, needless to say, it's a fairly long and detailed document. I would spend hours filling this thing out, securing the knowledge that it was absolutely complete and correct. I'd give it to Joanne. She'd sit there and look, she'd stand there and look at it. Within two or three minutes, she would find two or three errors. In, every year. I couldn't believe it, Joanne. I always thought I had a reasonably decent mind for detail, but I couldn't hold a shadow to you. Anyway, I don't want to drone on, but congratulations. It was my pleasure to work with you, and, uh, enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
I respected you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Just one more anecdote about Joanne. Joanne, you could walk into her office and ask her the most bizarre, obscure question, and if she didn't know it, within 30 seconds, she was in the election code and found the paragraph and sub-paragraph, and was reading it to you. So, Joe, you're exactly right.
Mark Taylor.
Mark Taylor. Mark Taylor. So probably, one of the most thankless and unrecognized jobs in city government is that of the city treasurer. Very few people understand what the city treasurer does, and as important as it is, maybe a lot of people need to understand it more. Mark has been absolute stellar city treasurer, has done it for nine years, nine, what he might say, thankless years, but we're thankful for Mark. Mark, the, I was always confident, I've always been confident in whatever comes from you, and in the numbers, in your advice, and you have been a good steward of this city's treasure. Thank you, sir. So with that, City of San Clemente, whereas Mark Taylor lives in San Clemente and demonstrated a love for San Clemente through his devotion to the elected city treasurer, and whereas, in evidence of the city council's confidence in Mark Taylor, he was appointed by unanimous vote to the elected office of city treasurer in 2013. And whereas, Mark Taylor executed the duties of city treasurer position in an exceptional manner with oversight to the safe investment of all public funds held in the city treasury, totaling over $140 million, and ensured the liquidity to maintain city daily operations. And whereas, Mark Taylor facilitated communications and decisions with the Investment Advisory Committee, including modification to the investment policy. And whereas, in November 2016, Mark Taylor was elected by the electorate to the office of city treasurer and went on to serve as an elected city treasurer until his retirement in November of 2022. Now therefore, I, Gene James, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend and thank Mark Taylor for his distinguished service on behalf of the people of San Clemente, and do furthermore wish him continued success as he embarks on the next chapter of his life. Mark, congratulations. Mark is also a recipient of the San Clemente tile. What do you have to say for yourself?
Well, I was very reluctant to be appointed, but it's certainly been an honor to serve the citizens of San Clemente, work with the various councils in the past, and all the members of the Investment Advisory Committee. I want to especially thank my lovely wife, Nancy, who's here. I was actually appointed on her birthday in 2013, and I promised not to run for election, and yet, I ran for election twice, and, but I'm very pleased that, actually, I want to thank, you know, all the various councils, because to me, it's the city councils that have maintained a very, you know, the fiscal responsibility that has really driven the finances and the financial health of San Clemente. So I applaud the council, present and past, and look forward to the future councils maintaining the same stewardship. So thank you for that, and, you know, I'm just thankful too, I don't know about you, Joanne, but I've had more questions saying, okay, what's the real story? You know, because you and I resigned on basically the same day, and there was the, the, on the election, as far as us being appointed, and so, so many people thought there was monkey business going on, and I'm happy to report, there was none. But anyway, thank you all, and especially, I also want to thank the Finance Department and city staff, they were just stellar, stellar to work with, so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. This is your show now, right? You have one more thing?
We're not done yet. Mayor James, you stay there. Mayor Pro Tim Duncan?
Right there, Gene. All right. All right, I have something here for our mayor, Gene James. Gosh, Gene, where do I start? Or better yet, where do I end? You know, Gene and I haven't always seen eye to eye, like in more ways than one. And Gene is a bigger-than-life character, right? But one of the things that bonded us right from that beginning was Gene had the courage to stand up for San Clemente even when he had to take personal heat for doing that. He did that, right? And I know I'm willing to do that, too. And that bonded us together, and we developed a real collegiality, a friendship, what was it, compadres, we were called for a little while? And, you know, Gene came in as the mayor at a tumultuous time. We were, we were struggling a little bit as a council, you might say, and he provided a guiding hand, he provided leadership, he kept our meetings from going over 11 o'clock for the first time in a long time. My wife thanks him for that, although, no more trips to the Red Fox, because we're getting out too early now. And it's been a year, I think, of real success, of real support for staff, again, despite some of the turmoil that we've had, and I thank you tremendously, Gene, for all the leadership you've you've provided over the last year, and for making San Clemente look good. You know, Gene is at every event, he's out there at the ribbon cuttings, he's putting that time in, he's showing appreciation for our residents, showing appreciation for our businesses. These are the things that our residents deserve from the mayor. So I want to give you this, Gene, and thank you for, for your year here as mayor. This is, this is short, it's just, Gene James, for dedicated service as mayor of the City of San Clemente, December 2021 to December 2022. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you. This is not the gavel I actually used. The gavel I actually used has a lot of cracks in it, mostly from Mr. Loeffler, who won't shut up during, during meetings. Never has a friend gavelled a friend in so much as I've gabbled that guy.
Right on!
And he deserved it. He deserved every bit of it. Never, ever, in all the things I have done, 24 years in the private sector in Fortune 500 companies, 20 years in the military, we're recognizing the USO tonight, nine years on the USO board, three of it as the board chair, one of it on the Board of Governors of the National USO. That was meaningful. Nothing has been so meaningful as being the mayor, the grandest city in the greatest nation in the history of mankind. I loved, I loved being the mayor, I love representing this city. And yes, you know, did we have a little drama here and there? We did, but we worked through it. And by the way, if you go back more than a year ago, our meetings were going to 1:00 in the morning. I think one went to 1:30. Mr. Duncan's wife got accustomed to him coming home at 2:30 in the morning, thinking, but for the past year, we've been getting out about 8:30, 9:00, 10:00, but Duncan's still coming home at 2:30. It wasn't until Haley started watching the videos that she realized we were getting out so early, so I don't know how you navigated that.
Took a lot of work.
But on a serious note, I've enjoyed working with this entire council, Ms. Ward is gone already, boy, she couldn't get out here quick enough, could she? The city treasurer, city clerk, I've, you know, both of them were just exceptional individuals. When we would get a financial report or investment report, I knew it was spot on. When city clerk Joanne Bade gave us advice, I knew that that advice was spot on. I thank, I thank Mr. Smith for giving us sage legal advice over the, in the three years I've been on council, and also, as it relates to the new city clerk and her assistant city clerk, they were prepared by the best, and they're already performing at that, and they're already performing at that level. So I thank all of you, and again, I thank my wife, in the event she's watching this, and, so, thank you, everyone. I really have enjoyed it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so you're on, right?
Okay, oath of allegiance to the newly-elected council members. We will start with Victor Cabral.
All right here.
Hello, all right. Go ahead, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Victor Cabral.
I, Victor Cabral.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and sign here. It is my honor to present to you your certificate of election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say something.
Oh, I can say something, okay. I don't want to speak out of turn. Am I on the timer? I did write a few notes, because I wanted, I didn't want to forget anybody, but first of all, I just wanted to thank the city, the citizens of San Clemente who have put their trust and faith in me. I hope to, that I will be able, over the next four years, to fulfill that responsibility and the promises that I've made in this election and this campaign. We also had a number of great candidates that ran, and I think, one of the things I learned about the campaign is that I think all of them ran extraordinary campaigns, they did great jobs, we can't all, we didn't all win, of course, but I think they deserve a round of support, too, because when you put your name out there, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of effort, and they were all trying to do what was best for San Clemente also. So I'd like to thank them for running a fair and honest campaign for city council. Again, I couldn't do this without my parents, my children, my grandchildren, all who have supported me throughout. My wife, Anna, who was my campaign manager, and my finance chair, and my treasurer, and my personal assistant, and did everything. Anna, why don't you stand up for a second? I have so many family, friends, colleagues, probably too many to mention, who gave their financial support immediately, without hesitation, and I just want to call out two people. One is a friend of mine who's not here, JD, I call him, who, I called him up on the first night, and I said, I need your help, I decided yesterday to run for city council, and he says, how much can I give you? And I said, I don't know, I think $4,900 bucks. He says, okay, I'll send a, send a check. So from day one, you know, I had those kind of friends that gave me the financial support I needed. Jess Hatch and Mary Ellis Hatch, who were strong supporters, did everything I asked. There were a number of other people I'd like to thank, because they really did help me, guide me, counsel me, the mayor, Mayor Gene James, Steve, No Block, Karen Pressler Loeffler, Thomas Ursason, Cameron Cosgrove, Mario Rodriguez, Michelle Brooks, Jenny Corn, Lisa and Brent Davis, Tim Brown, Tony Amador, former attorney general Bill Barr, Ashley Williams, and Aaron Washington, who occasionally, I think I saw him here, occasionally stood out in the corner holding our signs up. He was always a partner in crime in that. And there were many organizations also that endorsed me or supported me, including the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce, the Orange County GOP, the Orange County Young Republicans, the Lincoln Club, the San Clemente Republican Women, the Orange County Professional Firefighters, the Orange County Gun Owners, the Orange County Realtors, the Orange County Sheriff's Association, the Orange County's Tax Pack, and there were several religious institutions who didn't support me, but whose congregation, including the Christian community, and the LDS community, and the Catholic community, that, you know, reached out to their memberships and supported me. So I thank all of them. I'm looking forward to working with all of you on the city council, and I think it'll be a very productive four years coming up. Thank you.
Victor, come on up here.
Next up, we have Mark Inmeyer.
Hello.
All right, raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Mark Inmeyer.
I, Mark Inmeyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm, which upon I am about to enter.
Yes, thank you. And sign here.
And it is my privilege to present you with your certificate of election.
And I believe Megan.
Well, I'm just incredibly privileged and honored and humbled by this entire process, and thankful to the citizens of San Clemente who voted me in and whose support I have received. I am so grateful to all of them, I'm thankful to, especially to my family, and especially my wife, who's also my campaign chair, and just all-around amazing person, who has done so much, not only helping me with this campaign, but raising two amazing children, and I could not have done this without her. I always say that if I get elected, it's her fault, because of how amazing she is. I also want to thank, there is a group of women that supported me through, from the very beginning, and they put themselves out there to bring me to this spot, and I could not have done it without them. Courtney, Nicole, Raquel, Mackenzie, oh my goodness, who am I, I should have written them down, and Maya, and Louise, and Linda, and I'm forgetting one, oh my goodness, it'll come to me, but Carrie, thank you, and Carrie as well, they, they have done so much, and if you want to get something done in this town, you ask a mom, because they know how to get things done. I also want to thank I also want to thank other groups that supported me, the DWSOC, an amazing organization, the OCEA, the Orange County Employees Association, the San Clemente Employees Association, all of them who have supported and knocked on doors for me. I'm incredible, incredibly thankful. I'm really looking forward to humbly serving San Clemente in the best capacity that I can. And please, come and talk to me, come and knock on my, don't knock on my door, but send me an email, reach out to me, and I'll be happy to listen to you and to consult with you, and to serve this amazing town and amazing people of this town. So, thank you very much.
And before we move on to election of mayor and mayor pro temp, I'd like to call to the front Katrina Foley, Supervisor Foley's office is here to present new council members with commendations.
Laura, am I not going to do this one?
Pardon me, you are. We can do that. I'm sorry, I just got a text. Actually, I apologize, I'm going to swear in council member Knoblock first.
You make a leave?
You have been here before.
I have.
Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Stephen Knoblock.
I, Stephen Knoblock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties upon which I'm about to embark.
There you go. And it is my honor to present you with your certificate of election.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll be brief. I would also like to thank the citizens of San Clemente for allowing me to serve, humbly serve, as a member of your city council. This is a tough, it's a tough job, because there's so much to it, and it's a tough task, and for the dozen people that signed up to run, I want to commend them as several people have, because it's a tough job, there's a lot, there's a lot to do, and you're putting your life and your activities on hold while it goes on, and it's, it's an honor to serve. We're all supported by different organizations with different goals and objectives, but we all have one common theme and one common objective, and that's the welfare of our city, the benefit of our city, the protection of our beautiful town, keeping it and maintaining it that way, so that our kids and our grandkids can enjoy and love the town that we've all come to love and enjoy. And with that said, I just want to thank the people that supported me. There's a lot of them. I won't, I won't go through the list, but I'm honored to have their support, humbled, and hope that I deserve and worthy of their support. Thank you, one and all. God bless.
Madam Clerk, are you coming up?
Supervisor Foley's office, yes.
Hello, my name is Annie Mitchell, and I'm a representative for Supervisor Katrina Foley. She wanted to bestow these certificates of recognition for Mark and Victor as a congratulations for being newly elected to the City of San Clemente, and we are very excited to work with you. Yes, if you would. Thank you. Yours, and that is yours.
Thank you.
We are very excited to have, to be working with you in the future, and we are.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is the election of mayor, mayor pro temp. We do have a couple of speaker cards. Would you like to hear those first?
Sure. Are you going to come up here and be the presiding officer?
Yes, but I'll do the speaker cards first, so I can keep the timer.
Very cool.
First speaker is Amanda Q.
Okay, I'm speaking tonight in support of the continuation of Mayor Gene James to be our mayor. Within the last year, he's definitely demonstrated effective leadership at our city council meetings, and at times there have been, city council meetings that have been challenging, to say the least. And we haven't always agreed with each other. I think about a year ago, I was speaking against him being as mayor, but definitely he has proved me wrong. He has shown great leadership in, with a lot of matters regarding trying to rescind the Los Paternas Parkway extension, listening to our concerns regarding HOV lanes, not going beyond the freeway, the I-5. And I think it was Mayor Pro Tem Duncan that mentioned that he has been a real success. The gene has been a real success, and has been very supportive of staff. And he's been at every event, and he has shown us strong appreciation, and I do definitely agree with that. I think that any time that I've ever had any concern, he's always been available. He's always emailed me or been able to answer my calls. It may not have been immediate, but, you know, within an hour or two, he would contact me back, and I really appreciate that, and I think that really goes a long way to having effective leadership here. As a resident of San Clemente for over 50 years, I strongly support Mayor Gene James to be our mayor. Also, I think that we need to give an opportunity for council member Steve Knoblock to be mayor pro temp. And then, but however, on a negative aspect, I, for the last year, I've been quoting the FPPC, that public service is a public trust, requiring officials and employees to place loyalty to the citizens, the laws, and ethical principles above private gain, following ethical guidelines, and eliminating any improprieties, or even the appearance of potential corruption. It's imperative to safeguard, to safeguarding the public's trust in government. To help accomplish this goal, laws exist to aid public officials in avoiding conflicts between an official's public duties and the official's personal interest. As such, public trust requires citizens to place loyalty and faith into the laws and ethical principles of public officials and organizations. I bring this up because on various occasions, Mayor Pro Tem Chris Duncan did not live up to that challenge. Regarding why he was in San Clemente on June 21st, when council member Laura Ferguson asked him, he said that he was helping Monica Preia making phone calls for the, for Senator Pat Beat's bill, which was not accurate. And then he also said that the doxing of public information was.
Stop.
We're going to cut.
Okay, so it kept on going 11 and then coming back, so I didn't.
No, it was going 11 seconds over. Thank you.
Oh, okay, so that was overtime. Oh, okay, thanks.
We have a speaker card, election of mayor, mayor pro temp. There is no name on it. Actually, that, it's not your card. Someone turned in a card before you?
Did I possibly?
I think it was you, yes. Didn't see you out there, yep.
My name on it, certainly no secret, but Phil Kirtener, President of San Clemente, and.
I just wanted to speak on this subject. The city has something of a tradition, it's not always been adhered to, but the continuity of government that residents and businesses expect kind of demands that the mayor pro temp be advanced to mayor, and either the next most experienced, or the highest vote getter, is what I've seen in the past, be made mayor pro temp. There have been times in the past where I didn't like necessarily where that would leave people, but I, you know, I understand. I've been a member of organizations where there's kind of a chain, right? People move up in steps. Mayor James, you were mayor pro temp before you were mayor, and it's, it's a good time to pass that torch. I strongly believe that Chris Duncan is ready to be our mayor, and that he'll do a great job. I believe he won't inject divisive national issues into our city politics, and I think we have a lot to look forward to with Mayor Chris Duncan. And that's all. Thank you.
And the final card I have is for Louise Herbert.
I, too, am here to talk about moving forward with our mayor. I do believe in new leadership, and I think it's time for our city to move on to the next mayor, especially due to this past year's issues of personal problems from our existing mayor in conjunction with our Orange County Sheriff's Department. I think we need to move forward. In past history, this has always been the case with every city council, and the mayor pro temp needs to advance to be mayor. This is part of our accepted procedure, and I think it should remain in place. Thank you.
We have no more speaker cards, and with that, I'll move to the mayor's spot at the dice. Now, I'd like to open the nomination for office of the mayor.
I'll nominate myself.
I'll second that. I'd like to nominate Chris Duncan.
And I'll second that.
Was that a substitute motion?
It was a substitute motion.
No, I, just, Laura, it's, just nominations are open.
Okay, nominations are open.
And then they'll be voted on in sequence under the Rosenberg's rules.
Well, I would, if we're looking for nominations, I would nominate myself. I've served longer than any other council member, present or recently elected, so I'd like to be available for that position, if the majority of my colleagues so deem.
I move with close nominations.
We will take a vote on the nomination of Gene James.
Do we need to vote on?
Oh, yeah, excuse me, Laura, first you'd vote on closing the nominations.
Okay, we'll vote to close the nominations. My apologies. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh, nominations for Gene James.
I'm sorry, what?
Nominations for Gene James for mayor?
Vote, voting for Gene.
Vote, voting. We've got two votes. Council member Knoblock?
I'm going to abstain. I, comments that have been made about the need for a normal rotation, I think if this council is to demonstrate that we are going to be on a steady course, I think that there's no reason to have the same person be mayor, so I would have to abstain.
Mayor Pro Tem Duncan?
No.
No, okay. That's two in favor, two noes, and one abstention. Votes for Mayor Pro Tem Duncan?
No.
No?
Yes. Sit down.
No?
I'm sorry, what is, what is the vote for now?
Vote for Mayor Pro Tem Duncan for mayor?
Aye.
So we have, council member Inmeyer, aye. Mayor Pro Tem Duncan, aye. Mayor James, no.
No.
And.
No.
No. So that fails two-three. Motion for council member Knoblock to become mayor. Council member Inmeyer?
No.
No.
Oh, yeah.
I don't believe there was a second to that motion.
Okay, no second to that. I apologize. So now we have.
Now that you can just vote again, under Robert's rules, you'll continue to vote until there's a decisive winner. If no one's elected, well, if no one's elected, then we'll come back to what your code prescribes.
Shall we vote for Gene James again, or shall we open nominations?
Oh, you keep voting on the slate nominated.
Okay.
Gene James?
Gene James, yes.
Aye.
No.
No?
No.
No, and speaking to the motion, I, again, am going to abstain. I don't think there's any reason at all, I haven't heard any reason before this meeting or during this meeting, as to why we should have the mayor serve two terms. It's never been done in the history of our city. I don't think it's necessary, and I think we have four other candidates that would be sufficient and appropriate, and so I'm going to have to abstain from that vote.
With that, do we have votes for Chris Duncan for mayor?
No.
Was there a motion?
Continue with the slate.
It's continued with the slate. So Laura, we just ask all those in favor.
All in favor?
Of Chris Duncan.
Chris Duncan to become mayor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lacking no other party, another support, I'm going to have to be supportive. I think Chris has served well as the pro temp, and I know we have difference of opinion, but this isn't about politics, it's about chairing our meetings. I think Chris has, has done a good job when he's filled in in the past, and I think he'll probably do a good job, so I'm going to go yes.
Yes.
Yes. Council member Cabral, your vote was a no?
It's no.
And Mayor James, okay. With that, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor Duncan.
Let's do this.
We're opening nominations for.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Do I need to, do I gavel that open, or just?
No, you don't need to.
You can, yeah, or just, just open the nominations.
Okay, I'm going to open nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
I nominate Victor Cabral.
I would like to offer myself as a candidate for that position.
Second.
Mayor, was there a second on the nomination of council member Cabral?
No, I didn't hear a second.
You want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks.
We only have two nominations right now, waiting to see if there's a third.
And there was a second to council member Knoblock's nomination?
Yes.
Thank you for that, for.
I'll entertain motions to close the nominations.
So move.
All right, nominations are closed.
You'll need to vote on closing the nominations.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, okay.
Let's vote on closing the nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Any opposed? No. All right, nominations are closed. The first, we do the first one first, okay. The first one is, was it you, Steve?
Cabral.
Was it Cabral? Okay, the first one is Cabral. All in favor of Victor Cabral for mayor pro temp?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain.
No. The vote is two to one. Is that right? And there's no, there's no quorum, so.
There is a quorum. The, the, the two, two, one carries. Two, one with two abstentions carries.
No, it needs, it needs three votes to carry, it needs a majority, thanks.
All right, so that motion fails. Then we have the nomination of Steve Knoblock for mayor pro temp. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed?
No.
Victor, no. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, four-one in favor of Steve Knoblock for Mayor Pro Tem. And congratulations, Steve.
Next item on the agenda.
I think we...
Do you want to sit down with the other?
The next item is motions for waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Knoblock, Councilmember James with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous.
Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action.
Anybody have any agenda items requiring immediate action? Seeing none? Moving on to the next.
Next up is oral communications. We do have 13 speaker cards with a 30-minute time allocation, so we'll keep track of the First speaker is John Connolly.
Good evening, Mayor Duncan and members of the council. My name is John Connolly, C-O-N-L-E-Y. My wife and I are 30-year residents of San Clemente on Viamenzana, and we're bringing you down to a very difficult problem involving a small area of the city, but it's a very vital issue for us, and that's the revocation of an encroachment permit. Next slide, please. This is our area. The slide is facing the west. That is our house in the distance. The sidewalk and the redwood fence between them are a group of stones, and that is the city's right-of-way. And the issue here, I know you've gone from the big picture now to the very little picture, but the issue here is who maintains that? This is a long story, and it starts in '92 when we moved in, but I will try to telescope it a little bit. The other thing you should be aware of, there'll be discussion about a pergola being put up by our neighbors. Oddly, because of the cities coming together here, on the left side of the little redwood fence is San Clemente, but on the right side of that very fence is San Juan, and there are neighbors by the name of Irian, I-R-I-O-N, who own that. And unfortunately, we have a long history together of disagreements. Next slide, please. I'm going to skip to item D in view of the time. To make a long story short, on May 17th, the city gave us a permit to maintain that area. In fact, we had maintained it for 30 years, but not officially under a permit and so on. So the city issued that on May 17th, and Kyle Koger, the Director of Public Works, reaffirmed that in an email to me on October 11th. Next slide, please. But to our shock, on November 15th, an assistant city engineer withdrew that. Just withdrew it. It's gone. And by the way, you must take everything that you've put in there out. And by the way, it's got to be done within three weeks, because if you don't, we're going to do it, and we're going to charge you for it. What produced that? Is that a way to deal with citizens? Well, let's say, maybe there was a good reason. Was there? Due to proposed improvements on the Irian property. Notice the term "proposed".
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Shannon Connolly, followed by John M. Connolly.
Hello, my name is Sharon Connolly. My husband just gave you a brief timeline of what has been happening with the city right-of-way on Viamenzana. This is the second time in a year that the city of San Clemente has permitted or ordered that our plants, lighting, decorative boulder, and irrigation system be stripped from the right-of-way. On 12/9/21, the city told the Irians, residents of San Juan Capistrano, that they could maintain the right-of-way of the city of San Clemente, could remove all improvements. They removed everything from it, leaving only bare ground on January 4th, 2022. We later requested an administrative encroachment permit for the right-of-way, which was granted after much study by the city on May 17th, 2022. We eventually spent over $10,000 to convert the land to its appearance today. The Irians then applied for their own encroachment permit for the very, permit for the very same area, but that was denied. The Director of Public Works, Mr. Kroger, reaffirmed that our permit was still intact on 10/11/22. Five weeks after that reaffirmation, Assistant City Attorney Zach Paulson sent us a letter ordering that we remove all improvements to the right-of-way, returning it to bare earth and to do so within three weeks, which is tomorrow. The Assistant City Engineer, Mr. Paulson, indicated the Irians need the San Clemente right-of-way to gain access to their proposed pergola. This need, access, really is completely bogus. Please look at the enlarged photo. The Irians own all of the red lava rocky area, and they're going to put the pergola over by the east, the left side, so they can access their property through their area, not tear our whole area down and fence. Based on the, based on the Irians' building plan in the city of San Juan Capistrano, they will be requesting that the city of San Clemente allow them to place a block wall right next to the public sidewalk, enclosing the whole right-of-way. This would give exclusive access of the right-of-way, in effect, ownership of it. The area is an extension of our front yard. If it is stripped back to bare earth and converted to the Irians' use, it would have a huge impact on our curb appeal and the value of our home. It would be a big gift to the residents of San Clemente to give them this property. I have tried to show that the Irians have ample access to the San Juan Capistrano area. Please come out, look at it. Please stop the removal of our landscaping tomorrow until you have a chance to evaluate this situation. Please support a fellow 30-year resident of San Clemente.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, may I address a question to the city attorney, please?
Yes, of course.
I really feel that it is imperative that we give the Connolly's more time while this situation's in a state of flux. I believe the Connolly's have requested an appeal, and during that, during the period of time where there's an appeal, I would think that we would suspend any action to remove their property at this time.
And even, before you answer, Mr. City Attorney, and even beyond that, if we have an encroachment permit existing, what on earth is the city moving forward to change the use of that property?
It was revoked.
Mayor, council, if I could respond to the question, as is obvious, this isn't on your agenda tonight for discussion or action. The council could add it for discussion and/or action by making a finding that the need to take action arose after the posting of the agenda, or, I'm sorry, that it came to the city's attention.
I'm going to make a motion that this...
And that it can't wait till your next meeting.
Yes, I'm going to make a motion, this is a late-breaking item that will not wait until our next meeting.
That's, that's one part, right? Is, are there two parts?
You got both.
Okay, there's both of them in there.
Both those findings. That needs to pass with a four-fifths vote, and then you decide as a council at what point to discuss it tonight, now or later.
And we have, we have Kyle Koger here.
First you'd vote on...
Yeah, so, all right, do we have a second for the motion?
Aye, second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous.
Should we hear the rest of the comments?
We have one more comment from the Connolly's. Then when would we, we already passed that part of the agenda.
It's up to the council's discretion.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, I think this would be something we would agendize for our next meeting, but the only thing I'm looking for right now is giving direction to city staff that no action be taken against the Connolly's until the very least that we can discuss this on the 20th of December.
Okay, so your motion is that no action be taken until our next meeting, essentially?
That's right.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
Aye, second that.
Okay. Before we vote on that, could we get Mr. Koger just to provide a little bit of context about what implications that may have?
Our mayor, council, Kyle Koger, Public Works Director. It'll give us two weeks to kind of give a status and background of how we got to this point. We've been dealing with this issue, as Judge Connolly said, for over a year, and it's a little complicated.
Will there be any adverse implications or effects by waiting the two weeks until our next meeting?
No, I don't believe so. We revoked Judge Connolly's permit almost three weeks ago, but we have not issued a new permit to his neighbor. So we will just not do anything until we hear from you, or we present, present in two weeks, and we can go from there, so we can stop the process.
So you support two extra weeks to provide a background to the council so that we can make a decision about that?
I think so. It is a little convoluted.
Okay. All right. With that, do we, we have a motion and a second? Right, oh.
Oh, yeah, there were more speakers on the item, too.
Yeah, so let me amend my motion that, this may be redundant, but that all action, whether it's a permit to the residents in San Juan, or whether it's any kind of action the city takes against the Connolly's, all action is suspended until such a time as this council meets.
On December 20th. And who seconded that before? Was that you?
I seconded. I thought that was part and parcel to the motion, but I'll second the clarification.
Okay, and should we hear the comment before we vote?
Before you vote, Mayor, thank you.
All right, so we have one more comment, I think, from a member of the Connelly family? Is that right?
Yeah, there are other comments as well.
There's other people as well, okay.
Yes. John M. Connolly?
I'll keep this quick. I'm just out here to support my parents. They've maintained this right-of-way for 30 years. When I was younger, I used to mow it, and they've worked it. My dad retired just a couple of years ago, and he spent multiple hours every day and tons of money to get this to where we can continue to maintain that right-of-way. And everything, it looked like the hard work was paying off, and the city had issued a permit, and they were going to be able to maintain the right-of-way. And then just a couple of weeks ago, they get issued an order that says they won't be able to maintain the right-of-way anymore. And so I'm just kind of coming out here to support. They've always kept a really, done a really good job keeping it nice-looking, and I just wanted to, yeah, just hopefully you guys kind of reverse the course of action with that there. So I think the initial ruling with the permit was the right way to go, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Brian Dempsey on the same subject. And John Louis Salem follows the speaker on the same subject.
My name is Brian Dempsey. Forty years ago, I was in the Capistrano Unified School Board District encompassing San Clemente and San Juan. I must say, your action tonight is responsible, and the notes and the speech that I took a week to write are just in favor of the Connolly's. And to give you all that information, I don't know whether you'd be interested in it or not, but I just congratulate you for your action, and I congratulate the staff for supporting it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jean Louis Salem. I just want to say that I'm supporting the Connolly's position. They have beautifully maintained this section for years, and I think it would be unfair that this is revoked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is William Cunningham.
My name is Bill Cunningham. I moved to San Clemente in August of 1972, and my wife and I have lived at the same residence that we currently reside for the last 42 years. So we were there before any of this happened. The Connolly's are our next-door neighbors. Most of what I've written, you've addressed tonight with putting everything on hold, but I do want to give you a little bit of background information. The parcel of land that is under question here is part of Lot Number 19, tract 4850 in the city of San Clemente. It was designated as a landscape buffer zone with public access, and that designation today still has not changed. That was designated back in the early 1970s. So what precipitated the change was that the Irians went to the city of San Juan Capistrano and applied for a permit, and they submitted a plot plan, and I have a copy of that plot plan, and on it, they are asking for access and the right-of-way to quote their existing 119-square-foot pergola. Also, they wanted to enclose the, enclose the area with a two-to-three-foot wall right at the public sidewalk. The reason that they submitted that was actually fraudulent, because there is no pergola on that land. There is not now, nor has there ever been. So the city approved, the city of San Clemente approved the permit based upon the permit that had been issued to the city of San Juan Capistrano, which was a fraudulent application. Also, the land over which the Irians in San Juan Capistrano are applying for is not in San Juan Capistrano, it's in the city of San Clemente. All I want to add to that is that I think it would be unconscionable, after all that the Connolly's have been through for the last 30 years, maintaining that with their son mowing it, and then they tore out the grass years later and put in gardens and flowers, and it was absolutely beautiful. So I would just like to encourage you to consider the Connolly's time and effort and the beauty that they've added to our neighborhood over the last 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rick Dival, but I don't see him here anymore.
Can I have the point of privilege if we can move the, if we can move that easel out?
Next up is Clyde Mackinson Sanders.
What I'm here to talk about has already been addressed by former Mayor James and Victor Cabral, who's also pitched in on it. And it's got to do with the pollution that the MetroLink locomotives is causing right now, because since they can't go any further south in San Clemente, they're parking their locomotive in front of T Street, and the locomotive idles while it's parked for an hour or more, causing a lot of pollution. That's from the screen of my house that faces the beach. That's pollution from the locomotive. All that's going into my lungs, going into my furniture, my drapes, my paintings, all of that. So, Victor, I hope that you can help do something with this locomotive. So, Victor, I hope that you can help do something with this locomotive. Move it, have it shut down, whatever, you know? And you too, former mayor. And Mayor Duncan, if you can also take up the ball, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the, actually, the city manager has done some work on this today, and maybe he would like to.
One, one point before we get to that. We were in the middle of voting on the other item, and we were having comments just related to that. Now we've had another comment, so I want to make sure we don't get too far away. Before we address your point, sir, I think we should vote on the motion now that we've heard all the comments, or at least open it up for discussion. We already have a motion and a second.
Right, let's check with the clerk if there are more comments on the Conley encroachment.
There are not, as I went through the cards while they were speaking, there were some duplicates in there, so everyone that has submitted a card has spoken.
Call for the question then.
Okay, so we have the motion, which was amended and then seconded again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
So now I'll go back. Mr. Mayor, if, if the city manager could comment on, on the actions he's taken today?
As soon as we were made aware of the concerns over the last couple of days, we have been in contact with OCTA and, I think indirectly, with MetroLink. We are advocating on behalf, of course, of, of our residents and businesses alike, making every effort to persuade a change of location of, of those trains. The options are few, frankly. The effort remains underway, and we are hopeful that we can make more progress in the days ahead than we have made so far.
If you could add some context, interim city manager, why are the trains idling at that specific location? Is this, is this part of that work they're doing on the slope there? Are there other reasons?
Those delays, those delays in that idling is a direct result of the work being undertaken to reinforce the soil below. So it is a part of the larger, larger project. It is a direct result of the project itself. That project is slated to be completed at the end of February, very early March, weather permitting, and weather's a factor in, in projects like this. We are making the strongest argument we can that, at most, if we have to share in the burden of tolerating the longstanding idling, we're, we're open to that conversation, but we don't want to be the only solution in town. We, we certainly would hope that the idling, as it is necessary, it is as little as necessary, and that they move the cars so that the same residents and businesses aren't the only ones suffering.
Okay, and so we, we're able to reach out to OCTA to express those concerns?
We had conversations with them today.
Okay, and then, do we need to agendize a report for the next meeting as far as an update on that, or do you want to just be able to do that at city manager comments?
I'm happy to do it under city manager comments, yes.
We'll have an update for you at the next meeting, sir.
Thank you.
We can't take the comments, sorry, out of, away from the podium. Sorry, appreciate, thank you. All right, do we have any more oral communications?
Two more speaker cards, Amanda Q. and Erin Washington.
I think there's some information. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Hello, council members. I'm speaking tonight regarding a couple of matters. On Thanksgiving, a 80- to 90-year-old old ficus natidia tree broke off, on the third of it broke off, and it was heartbreaking. Unfortunately, the tree could not be saved due to safety concerns because it was right on top of a jungle gym for kids. And I was informed by Mr. Coger that the tree couldn't be saved even if they pared it down. I did some research on the matter because I wanted to make sure that any tree replacement would be at least 72 specs or higher. And the 72-spec tree, I got a quote on that, and I sent that to Councilmember Gene James, Kyle Coger, Steve Fritsch, and Brian Fields, because Brian Fields was out there at the time. And the 72-spec tree was $6,000 for the tree with a 250 install, a $1,000 protection plan and tax included, and it's free installation, so they bring in a crane to do that. And that cost was $7,734.36. And for a bigger tree, for the ficus natidia, 100 specs, the cost of that would be $12,000, 250 install, 2,000 protection, $2,000 for the protection plan tax, and also free installation with the crane as well, $15,199.36. So I really think it's important that we replace the ficus natidia with a, a tree that is comparable to, you know, to, with, you know, more mature tree. And I understand that the city staff has been having some concerns finding the tree, but I was able to find that at, I think, Moon Valley. The second matter I would like to bring up was the vote of October 18th regarding the city's general plan EIR regarding, under future conditions of the year 2035, where it stated that the FTC, the Foothill Transportation Quarter, is the extension of State Route 241 from Mosso Parkway to Cal Camp, which was completed in 2019, which was incorrect. And I, I understand that, I think it was November 1st or November 15th, it was voted not, to make an addendum for that, and I'd like to see that addendum, if that's possible. But this brought up a couple of matters because I really, I was talking to Laura Smith from Not My Toll Road Group, that we really need a transportation, maybe a sub, a transportation committee or of, of residents, just in case this happens, because unfortunately, it was not caught by a couple of staff members, and, so if we could have that, I really would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does the city council need this evidence?
Give it to the city clerk.
I'll take your word. Sure I will. Sure I will. Thank you, sir, I appreciate the offer.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council, and I want to first say congratulations. Congratulations, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Mark, and Victor. I just wanted to say, since I know I'm not there, if you guys can just keep in your mind, I know one of the initiatives I was going to try to do if I was sitting in your seat was put a subcommittee together to go partner up with San Juan Capistrano and Dana Point to work on our homeless situation, to try to get county land to put a temporary, whatever you want to call it, facility. Please just keep that in your mind. And now, Mayor, now that you're not, you're the mayor now, I know I'm not on Beach Park and Recreation anymore, but we know we got that money for the sand. If we could reengage that subcommittee on Beach Park and Recreation to get sand put on our beaches until we actually figure out what we're going to do, grow-ins or whatever it's going to be. That's all. Thank you, and good luck.
And the final speaker card is Mike K.
Mayor, city council members, I also would like to congratulate all of you, and would also like to acknowledge the hard work that our mayor, Gene James, did. I also want to make a, just a brief comment that it's a pretty harsh system we have, where one guy's in charge one minute, and now he's got to sit there, and that's got to be really harsh. I've got a lot of respect for you, James, former Mayor James, for the way you've held your, held up and the way you've served us. I want to make a comment related to an election. Although I think, most people think it's a free and fair elections that we've had, my vote wasn't counted, and that was a little troubling to me. I was contacted later and was able to correct that. So there are irregularities that happen. I don't think it threw our election one way or the other. Months ago, there was a, an idea put out that we were going to limit the amount of funding that was going to go into the ability for a campaign contribution, et cetera, and it was tabled by the mayor with the idea that it would be looked at later. And I would ask that, going forward, that we do reconsider that and that we expand upon that, and we bring in some of the issues that we're seeing locally. There have been allegations of some funny stuff on social media going out to at least one of you up there, and potentially influencing the way people were voting with false information. I don't know how a local city council would deal with Twitter or social media, fake accounts putting out all kinds of crap, but it does happen even in our community. It did happen in this election. Not enough to throw it off, I'm not saying, I'm not a vote denier at all, but if we are going to have a future resolution that looks at the amount of money we're doing, it would be nice if it included outside PACs, the influence of outside players, actors in the real world of information now, which is social media. Certainly if a newspaper two days before the election was saying this guy's a whatever, and it was false, that would be an issue with us, and yet that is happening with social media. I don't know how to do it, but if you were to go beyond just the contribution quantities and included the quality of information distribution and the systems that we have, and, again, I don't know how, but if we took a look at, I think it was an election, so it's time to talk about it, that would be a good thing. Anyway, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. That the last comment?
That is it for oral communications. Moving on to consent, I have one item polled by the public, item 4G.
Was that for B as in boy?
G as in George.
G as in George, thank you.
Do any council members want to poll any other items from the consent calendar?
Move the, move the balance.
Okay, I'm going to take it as a no, yeah, hearing none for the other one. Any seconds for that motion?
One second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 4G, Jan De Fabrique.
Good evening. Thank you, gentlemen, of the San Clemente City Council. My name is Jan De Fabrique, the president of San Clemente Aquatics. Purpose of my presentation this evening is to reiterate our invested interest in our senior partnership, but more importantly, thank you for the support over the last 48 years. Most of the operational details are in the packet provided to you, so I will spend my time highlighting what we do as a swim club to serve our community. No matter what time in history you view, our swim club has served as a center for all kinds of levels, water safety to national performances. Over the years, our student athletes have performed at different levels based on their desires and skill sets, while some have become elite student athletes and put our community on the map nationally. As a matter of fact, we took a small but mighty team to Seattle this past weekend, where our women finished 18th and our men finished 20th, while competing against numerous colleges from around the country. Quite a performance. Our athletes have developed their skills in the pool here, first at Ola Hanson, then ultimately at Vista Hermosa. Many have gone on to participate in athletics and academics alike at numerous Division One universities, Harvard, Princeton, Stanford, Arizona, Kentucky, Georgia Tech, just to name a few in recent years. Many of our athletes have gone on to become doctors, lawyers, businessmen, architects, artists, and professionals in many different career paths that have created a legacy in our community. I share this because it is important for everyone in this room to understand that our goals aren't to develop one-dimensional athletes. We develop young athletes into adults that give back to their communities. Our system is curated to develop civic leaders, and this is consistently expected of our coaches through communication and goal-setting sessions. Many make their way back here to San Clemente, and wherever they land after their college careers and postgraduate work, they give back to our great city. Speaking of giving back, I am personally here because I want to give back to the sport and community that I love. Swimming is not my main profession, but having swum in two Olympics and having been involved in the sport of swimming for the last 42 years, in one capacity or another, there's no greater satisfaction than seeing our young student athletes succeed, hence my involvement. Over the last two and a half years, we endured numerous obstacles during the pandemic, but we persevered thanks to the collaboration and motivation of our club and staff. We worked together to find commonalities while we re-entered normalcy, and while this wasn't easy, we found opportunities to create something out of nothing, in part thanks to this council. It's been many years since we have stood here before you and wanted to take a moment to share the excitement in the years ahead. We have a young team that is developing into a world-class organization and requires the support of many, all of which begin with you. So thank you for the past support and hopeful support in the future. Now that you've heard from me, we would like to invite you this coming weekend. We're hosting a big age group championship called the Winner Age Group Championships here in our home pool at Vista Hermosa. I'd like to personally invite you all, you come and see these young athletes in action as they compete against the best in California.
Thank you so much. Thank you. This weekend. Great. And by the way, thank you, Jan, for always inviting council to the pool. I haven't been able to get to one yet because I've always had a conflict, but you always reach out to all of us and give us the, the chance to, to come and participate and, and observe the competition. So I appreciate you doing that. Do we have any discussion on this item? Yes?
Discussion, I, I read, I wouldn't raise this otherwise, but I raised it, and I just want to make sure I was correct on this. You give one scholarship away per year?
Our scholarship protocols are, are related to the outreach program that United States Swimming sets forth, and they are basically a lunch program. So you have to qualify through a lunch program. We would offer more if more people qualified through that program, but we would offer more scholarships if it was available based on the United States Swimming protocols for an outreach program.
There is a need here in San Clemente, or?
Swimming seems to be a little bit more of an affluent sport, so there hasn't been a need. We have offered scholarships on a, on a yearly basis, and we have had up to three to four athletes at one given time. This past year has, it was just one athlete that qualified for the scholarship.
It just seems to me that's something that, you know, that, that the, the organization should, because it's not part of the, well, should, should try to, to improve on, but that's just my personal opinion.
And we're always willing and able to, and we'll continue to explore an idea, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the item?
I'm in support of the item. I would just recommend in paragraph 20, 20.2, that the city, the contract, the agreement gives the city manager the ability to extend for one year. I just ask that the city council grant that authority rather than delegating it to the city manager, so that we're aware of, at the end of the year, how the program's going and so forth. So with that modification, I would move approval of the item.
I'll second.
So you're seconding the motion to, and part two would be to have the city council execute the, the city?
The extensions under the agreement, the, the manager grants the extensions. My, my modification would simply be that the city council grant the modifications at the end of the year for the extensions. So I'll recommend items one and two with the modification to item two.
Okay. And we had a second from Councilmember Cabral. I will move that we, that we, we approve the item as drafted with the city manager providing the approval, because I think that's something administrative that the city manager is, is fully capable of doing. Any seconds to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So first, the substitute motion of approving the staff recommendation as is. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, it's unanimous. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on from consent, special presentations, California Department of Insurance. Presentation by Andrea Valdez, Outreach Analyst, California Department of Insurance, concerning wildfire safety.
Hello?
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, yeah. Decided to be here.
Are we going to put my? Okay, yeah, there we go.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and make this short, but my name is Andrea Valdez, and I'm an Outreach Analyst for the California Department of Insurance. Next slide. So just to give you a couple of things that the California Department of Insurance does, because not a lot of people know about us, we currently have our current elected insurance commissioner, that is Ricardo Lara. He ensures that insurers are solvent, consumer complaints are addressed in a reasonable manner, insurers and licensees play fairly in the marketplace. Everything that we do at CDI is to protect consumers from fraud and abuse. So what can we do for you, the consumer? Anytime you have a question about insurance, call us. If you're shopping for insurance and want to know more, you can visit our website. If you're denied a claim or coverage, you're an agent or insurance company not returning your calls, contact us. You can always file for You can always file a formal complaint on our website. Just remember that CDI is here to help you. Next slide. So just a big update on our safer from wildfires. So when Commissioner Ricardo Lara came into office, he listened to the California residents and our first responders to tackle the immediate needs. One of the major issues that we heard across the straight, across the state, excuse me, is non-renewals and premium increase for home and businesses. To address the issue this year, Commissioner Lara launched Safer From Wildfires, our state's first large inter-agency partnership to protect lives, homes, and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. It is a three-step program based on a simple concept. When you do the work, you should see the reward. So the steps are home hardening, protect their structures by specific things, and you can do to ensure your roof, walls, fence. And then number two is protect your immediate surroundings, such as clearing the brush. And then the third step, a really big one, is involving the entire community in fire protection. That includes programs like Firewise, which brings neighborhoods together to protect their homes. These new regulations will reduce pricing, increase transparency, and give the property owner the right of appeal. So there was a public hearing last April. We should know more in January 2023 with more of an outcome in April 2023. Next slide, please. Just another thing that CDI offers, we do offer senior resources, so we do have our senior gateway portal online, so it's a one-stop shop for seniors and caregivers. Any topics such as avoiding and reporting abuse, preventing fraud, and then healthcare information as well. Next slide. And then just something I briefly want to touch on, we do have our CLCA program. This is the California Law on Auto Insurance. So CDI, the California Department of Insurance, does offer California's low-cost auto insurance. So you do need auto insurance, it is the law, so all drivers must have proof of financial responsibility. To qualify for the CLCA program, you do have to have a valid driver's license, the value of the car has to be under $25,000 and not financed with a loan, and then checking the income level. Next slide. And then how to apply for my low-cost auto, you can take that eligibility questionnaire online. You can always contact us, and we do have that number there, that 866-602-8861. Next slide. And then any questions about California low-cost auto, you can always call that number there. And then again, any problems with insurance, any complaints, anything like that, contact us. Not a lot of people know we exist, so please use that consumer hotline number, that's that 800-927-4357. If you want us to come out to any events, we are more than happy to, especially with wildfires and anything like that. So thank you for having me, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Give Commissioner Ricardo a lot of our greetings.
I will. Thank you so much for having me.
And just to point out, I mean, this is an item that is particular of interest, I think, to San Clemente because we have wildfire issues, we have residents who have lost their insurance, and so we will be following up, I think, to ensure our residents are protected and as we move forward and more and more residents find themselves without insurance in the event of a wildfire. So thank you for that.
Okay. Next step is presentation by Crystal Gates, Center Operations and Program Manager, concerning USO Camp Pendleton operations.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. Very excited to be able to have the opportunity to come in and speak with you, so thank you once again for this opportunity. If you can go ahead, next slide, please. USO mission, if you aren't familiar with, we strengthen Americans' military service members by keeping them connected to family, home, and country throughout their service to the nation. We do that through a multitude of different ways that we'll go ahead and speak with tonight. Next slide, please. USO is worldwide. We have over 200 locations across not only the United States, but in our foreign countries, seven continents, 15 countries, 31 states, airports, military installations, and more. We do have over 30,000 volunteers that help us across that with 1.6 million annual volunteer hours total. Here in the San Diego region, we have currently about 200, we're trying to build back up to our 450 that we had pre-COVID, so we are looking at getting that, and we're excited to be able to have that. Next slide, please. We do have multiple locations here within the San Diego and Camp Pendleton area. Claim to fame, we are the first USO on a Marine Corps base in the United States. You'll find us on Navy bases, Army bases, Coast Guard, the such. You'll find us on Marine Corps bases overseas a lot, but Camp Pendleton is the first Marine Corps base in the United States for us to be able to have a USO center on, and so we're great to be able to have that. We will be celebrating four years open come March of '23. We also have our MEPS, Military Entrance Processing Station down in San Diego. Most people are familiar with all of the airport centers that we've got. We also have a mobile unit down in San Diego, and we have a warehouse that we can go ahead and carry all of our logistics out of. Next slide, please. Here aboard Camp Pendleton, you'll find that we do lots of different programming and opportunities, something that I'm hoping to be able to bring into San Clemente as well. Out and About, we did one earlier this year down south in Carlsbad. It was a huge success. As you know, military members, we've got quite a few that live up close to the San Clemente border here, would love to be able to bring them in and get to see the city. What we had done in Carlsbad that I'm hoping to bring out to San Clemente is a scavenger hunt of sorts. We got together with the village down there, had a map, the families checked in with us, they got to go through, get a little token of appreciation from those community members and businesses who were willing to participate with us, and then we closed it out with some ice cream from Handel. So that's what we're looking at being able to do, but we offer command support, field events, lots of deployment support I'll talk about in a little bit, spouse programming, and our biggest event of each year is our USO jamboree. We also support the Marine Corps trials, which will be coming up late February, early March of '23 as well. Next slide, please. Our homecoming and deployment support is my heart here. My husband served 30 years in the Marine Corps. He did 11 deployments, I was with him for nine of those. We have three children, so I know the struggles that our families go through firsthand. While those guys and gals are gone, we, as the family who are left behind, are going through our own trials and tribulations, and to be able to have that opportunity to build our own tribe, to help support us through that is important to me. Welcoming those guys home with a little care package and being able to send them off pre-deployment with some toiletry items is always an important thing as well. So our eGluts event is something that I started myself with the program once I came on board in January of, earlier this year, and we do an opportunity the second week, second Saturday of every month, again, looking at different locations. I would love to be able to bring an opportunity up into the northern side of base to meet those families up in this area as well. Next slide, please. One of the programs that we have, as our military members are planning to transition out, we want to ensure that they know what it is, that they're doing, what they're getting into, and make sure that they're on that right path for that. So we do have a transitions program that's available. We are a resource-based group for that. They show employment opportunities, education, and quite a few other things. They, again, are across the United States. If our military members are getting out, they're not planning to stay here in San Diego. We will be able to connect them with their home that they're going back to. So say they're going back to Texas, we can get them in touch with specialists that are in that area as well for that transition period. Next slide, please. We would love to have you come out and visit our center that we have aboard Camp Pendleton. We currently are located on a main side of base, which is closer to that south side of Camp Pendleton in building 1104. There we offer a home away from home, we've got snacks available for our military members to come in and enjoy. Everything that we offer through the USO is at no cost to our military members and their families. We have movies, video games for them to be able to come in and participate with, as well as special kid programming and special events that are specific to those military members. Next slide, please. So you wonder how you can be involved? Lots of different things. We've got volunteer opportunities that are there, so we'd love to be able to have individuals come in and volunteer with us. It's a very short little orientation to be able to get you in. There's some wonderful training and such, businesses you allowing us to come in, and you host us for an event, as I mentioned, with the Out and About that we would love to be able to do. And of course, we're a nonprofit that we rely on lots of donations, so there's always that opportunity to be able to donate in for us. Next slide, please. So once again, I'm Crystal. I am the Center Operations and Programs Manager here at Camp Pendleton. One of my next goals aboard Camp Pendleton, as we are one of the largest bases in Southern California and across the United States, is to open up a second location, so we're working on that. My contact information is there, as well as our Transitions Manager and our Executive Director, William Finnick. Again, I thank you all so much. Any questions for me?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you so much. You're in a friendly, you're in a friendly town, as you know, Marine Corps town. It'd be great to have another location, I guess, up this way. I'm our U.S. Marine Corps liaison right now, and so we will be in communication about what we might be able to do in town here.
Great.
Have you had any, or do you communicate with the Military Spouse Association on base?
As a matter of fact, we'll be over there Thursday evening after I'm at the MCI West Holiday Event, yes.
Oh, I'll see you there.
Okay.
But yeah, obviously a great group as well. So thank you for all the work you do, and yeah, I'm sure this town will be supportive of any kind of event we can have for service members and their families in our area, as we do many other events, as you know as well. Any other comments? Okay. Appreciate your time.
Thank you once again. I do have a little token of appreciation for being able to speak. Laura, if I can give these to you. Anybody who's familiar with the military knows challenge coins are the key items. If there is one for
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Everybody on the floor here.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you once again.
Thanks.
Homeless update will be provided at the December 20th, '22 council meeting, so moving on to reports. City Manager?
Thank you. I have two items. One is to disclose that since your last city council meeting, I had signed a contract with MGT of America to conduct a part-time classification and compensation study. It's been referenced in the context of lifeguards in recent weeks and months, and so that was signed in the amount of $17,668. And I would note, do look forward to us returning to you to make a recommendation for an award or bid for a similar study, that is, a class and comp study for our full-time employees will be coming to you, I expect, January 17th of the new year, so look for that. Also, as I have been doing, given the concerted effort and interest of the city council and therefore, of course, staff concerning hiring more lifeguards, I want to let you know, keep you apprised along the way, our beach parks and recreation folks, along with human resources team, have scheduled a winter hiring fair for all aquatics positions. This includes a fair on Friday, December 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., noon, at San Clemente Aquatics Center. If you're not familiar, that's 987 Avenue of Vista Hermosa, beautiful facility. Interested candidates can apply online at www.san-clemente.org/jobs. If you look at our website, you'll find it with these, it's one of our most visited pages. The hiring fair will include tryouts, interviews, and onboarding. Based on the recent city council action to increase pool lifeguard pay, that position series now starts at $17.79 per hour and goes up to $22.17 per hour, so we think the position's even more enticing than it already was. There's a shift premium available, also approved by the city council, recognizing our need to secure the best for our protection of our folks who use the pool. That premium applies to those who would work Monday through Friday from 5:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The pay for that position is almost $21, $20.99, up to $26.16. We train and certify if we hire you, so we strongly encourage folks, particularly some of our young folks in town, who might be curious, to take a look at that and visit our hiring fair Friday, December 16th.
And then, State Manager, those pay figures are an increase from where we were before?
They are, they're a substantial increase from before.
Okay.
They will, those pay rates will also be the subject of the now underway class and comp study. And by the way, if I ever make a presentation and I'm a former member of an Olympic team, I'm going to lead with that. I'm going to lead with that.
Yeah.
You're going to hear it early and often.
There you go.
He was very humble to mention that quite late in his presentation. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
City Attorney.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I have nothing to report tonight.
Councilmembers.
Any councilmembers?
Nothing here.
I would just say, because in the rush of our transition here, I didn't have really the opportunity to say anything, I'd just say briefly, honor of a lifetime to be the mayor of this great, unique city, the greatest beach city in the United States at least, and just really humbled to be able to serve with this incredible staff we have in this town, serve these residents who really are the heartbeat of our city. They make San Clemente what it is, and also work with our great sheriff's deputies, our firefighters, our city attorney. I'm just kind of overwhelmed to get this honor. It's sort of, comes very quickly, as you saw, and look forward to having a wonderful year here and keeping things going and having a very polite and vigorous discourse on the dais here, but respectful and getting stuff done for the residents. That's what you all deserve, and that's what we're going to deliver, if I have anything to say about it. So just wanted to make those comments. Steve, do you have anything to say as well?
No, great comments, thank you.
All right.
I have a comment to ask. City Attorney, excuse me, City Manager, there's something I was going to ask you about. What was it? Because I forgot.
You were going to ask about, we've talked about striping the streets near
That's been answered.
You were going to ask about the trains? What was the other one?
Been answered. I think that's it. I do have one comment. I want to talk about West Coast Arches, which was brought to this council. I observed West Coast Arches a week ago dropping huge prawns without any safety measures whatsoever. People were almost struck several times, in my observation. And City Manager, I think West Coast Arches needs to get an official letter from you, you know, imploring them to use safety. I know they're union members and they can't get fired, but we need some sort of notice to them that they simply cannot endanger, these are out-of-towners endangering our community, and if we can get something from you to the, I hope the council will support me on that. And there's, I have multiple pictures from other sources of them doing it, so I'm very concerned about the safety procedures of West Coast Arches.
And I'd like to know if there's anything in the contract that accounts for that type of behavior or risk-taking that we might be able to use to get some relief for the city or at least some
There is. I recall when we wrote it, that was one of the things, West Coast Arches was come back, was to come back with this on.
Okay, well, I will support that. Do we have a third support looking into?
I'd support that.
Okay.
Sorry, could I just get clarification on what the issue was? What happened?
So on several occasions, one was down by OC Tavern. They absolutely had no, if you're dropping prawns from 50, 60 feet, by the time they get to the ground, they have some velocity, and they're required to have some sort of safety person on the ground, ensuring that those prawns are not coming down. Additionally, the process they should be using is those prawns should be going into the bucket, not being dropped from the top of the tree, and they were doing neither. And then it got even more serious when they were on El Camino Real, right in the middle of town, doing the same thing as well. So I have concerns about the safety procedures of West Coast Arches. I have concerns about the safety procedures of West Coast Arches.
So, yeah, go ahead, Victor.
Not on this topic.
Okay. So, we have direction, interim city manager, for follow-up on that issue?
I will follow up accordingly. We did dispatch somebody immediately. I called Brian Fields immediately, but there's no question, there needs to be somebody at the base of those trees when those are trimmed. And I will follow up personally on that. Thank you.
And city manager, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I was going to mention that today. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Council member Cabral?
I'd just like to offer my congratulations to you, Mayor, and to the mayor pro temp on your elections. And I think we'll all get along. I think we'll all work together. And I hope it'll be an exciting few years together. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other council members? Any subcommittee reports? A quick question of the city attorney. We've had subcommittees over the years. We had some suggestions tonight about other subcommittees. What's the proper forum to decide whether we organize and who might comprise a subcommittee?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. There are lots of ways to do that. But the most important thing is that if you have ad hoc committees meeting, and that's what you're talking about.
Right.
Their tenure and their jurisdiction cannot be indefinite. It has to be limited. And so, how you close them out, or open new ones, or extend them, is, a good time to do that is right now, when you consider your regional appointments and commission delegates to other bodies. Often, a council will ask a city clerk to bring back a list of ad hoc committees that you can look at, refresh, cut back, or add to.
And I think, city clerk, we're going to do that next meeting? Okay, so that would be the time?
Yeah, so any new ones you'd consider then, too?
And Mr. Mayor, I have two more things. I'm sorry. I have a follow-up to that. When we constitute the committees and subcommittees and assignments on the 20th, that's a wide-open conversation. We can create new subcommittees at that time. Or do we need to agendize that?
Right.
It's wide open. Thank you.
Okay, good. That's going to help. And then, I have one other thing. And this is a shame on me. I'm going to make a motion for reconsideration on the $440,000 that we approved for design of Steed Park. Two reasons. Number one, I want to front-load pickleball. That's number one. Number two, we're going to spend $440,000 on an eight-million-dollar project that we don't have. Consequently, I think we should hold off until we figure out exactly what we want at Steed Park, how much it's going to cost. I think, and take all that aside, and I think the new council needs a bite at that apple to see what's going on with that $440,000 in the planning and design, and ultimately, what is our goal at Steed Park. So, I'm making a motion for reconsideration. City attorney, can only those that were in that vote vote on that, or can the full council vote on that?
The whole council can vote. Mayor and Council, the whole council can vote. The motion should be made by someone on the side that prevailed.
I was in the majority.
Which I think it is. Because the vote on the reconsideration is not on your agenda, I'd suggest that this vote be to put the reconsideration.
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
And then, this is on your next meeting.
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
And ask staff to keep the progress in advance.
I'd appreciate that, because I think that would give the staff an opportunity to kind of brief us on exactly what were the contours of that, what are the implications of not moving forward. So, I can support that. I think I was in the majority, too.
Yeah, you were. And by the way, the contract has not been signed, so that's not an issue.
Okay.
So, if we could bring that back. That's my motion.
Do you need three for a report, or is it automatically?
I think you need three for a report, so if you get consensus, three.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. City clerk?
Yes. Right on schedule for our first public hearing at 7:30, which is ordinance to adopt various building code regulations and local amendments.
We've been at two and a half hours. You and?
Well?
No, it's 7:30. Never mind.
Yeah, that's the thing. If it wasn't exactly at 7:30, maybe. Do I open the public hearing now, or do I wait for something else to happen first?
We don't have any speaker cards, but you'll open the public hearing.
Close it.
And then, close it. But we can?
Open and close.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing?
Now, you close it.
And there are no speaker cards?
No, because there's no speaker.
Are there speaker cards?
No, there are not. No speaker cards.
Close the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jack Holden, your building official. In my capacity, I manage the building department. Along with me is Nick Pivara from OCFA. He's a city inspector.
Oops. Thank you. He's here to answer any questions regarding the fire code. As a background, every three years, we go through a cycle where we adopt codes. The state of California accepts codes from various organizations, code-developing organizations such as NFPA, IATMO, ICC. And they also develop their own codes, the energy code and the green building code is uniquely Californian. Typically, these codes are the previous year's, and California amends those codes. Then, they give each city the opportunity to amend those codes due to specific elements of our city, either climatic, topographical, or geological issues that we have. And in San Clemente, we have those issues with our hills, poor soils, corrosive soils. So, we make very few amendments to our building code to address those unique situations. And also, we have our very high fire severity zones, and we have fuel modification zones. If we could do the next slide, please. These are the building codes. There's 12 parts to the state building code that we are required to adopt. And those go into effect January of 2023 with our amendments, if you approve those tonight. Next slide. So, our jurisdiction, since we have our hills, narrow streets, poor soils, we amended our codes, primarily just very minor things in the plumbing code and building code. We've tried to keep our modifications very, very few. These codes have been developed over the years. This code type has been in place since 20, year 2000, so we've had 23 years of this code. So, you'll really not notice a whole lot of changes in the building or fire codes from cycle to cycle. Next slide, please. These are the areas I spoke of, the very high fire hazard zones and the fuel modification zones. These areas require specific improvements to the building construction to resist fire. Next slide. Now, the major changes in the 2022 codes are not really the technical things. We've been doing these things for 23 years, this particular code. We change things to keep up with technology. But the major changes in the codes that you'll really notice are in the energy code and the green building code, which are primarily Californian codes. So, you can see, the main thing is directed toward electric vehicle stations, requiring us to approve those very quickly. Receptacles for dryers, stove tops, things like that, need to be installed in new construction. And this is all leading toward our move toward eliminating fossil fuels and creating an electric-only type of situation. So, those are the main changes that you'll see. The move is electric homes and businesses, energy and green building codes, following the trend of climate change advocates. And the California Air Resource Board that approved regulations to ban the sale of new gas engine cars could restrict the sale of gas appliances within the state. And that's probably how they'll move that, rather than doing the building code. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I just put this on. You've been doing this a lot of years. There's a balance between what cities want and what the state wants. How have you seen that relationship change over the years? And what direction do you see it going? Or do you see state power over cities continuing to grow? And is it the right balance?
Interesting. The state mandates us to use the same code. The code that's developed and adopted by the state, all jurisdictions within the state have to adopt it. Very limited ability for local jurisdictions to change what the state wants. So, as the state develops, so does the code. The state legislature has a great impact, other than codes, especially with accessory dwelling units. You can see what they did with that. Building codes remain the same, but we have to address the ADUs and smaller units, converting garages. We have to keep up with that. The state also mandates that we issue permits quickly, especially for solar. They're going to require us to have immediate issuance of solar permits in the future. We'll have to do that by September of next year. So, the legislature comes up with these ideas, and we just have to accommodate them, which we do. Mr. Mayor, absent any other questions, I'm prepared to make a?
You're going to read this?
I'll read it.
Okay.
I'll go, I'm going to make a motion for staff recommendation, adopt ordinance number 1738, entitled Ordinance, City Council of the State of San Clemente, California, amending Title 15, Chapters 15.05, 15.08, 15.11, 15.12, 15.14, 15.16, 15.17, 15.18, 15.20, 15.22, 15.23, and Title 8, Chapter 8 of the San Clemente Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2022 California Vehicles, California Building Standards Code, California Code of Regulations, Title 24, consisting in part of the 2022 Administrative Code, the 2022 California Building Code, the 2022 Residential Code, the 2022 California Electric Code, the 2022 California Mechanical Code, the 2022 California Plumbing Code, the 2022 California Fire Code, the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code, the 2022 California Energy Code, the 2022 California Historical Building Code, the 2022 California Existing Building Code, and the 2022 California Reference Standards Code, together with certain additions and amendments.
And dilutions.
And dilutions. Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous.
I chose to read that one rather than the next one.
It's good to hear you talking about green energy chain.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Now, we are on the public hearings and we have the schedule. Do we need a 5, 10-minute break, though? We've been going at it for quite a while. Is that?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
Want to move forward? Okay. I'm good, too. Just wanted to ask.
Okay, next item, specific plan amendments, 21-229, to update specific plans for consistency with the Centennial General Plan, zoning code, and coastal land use plan.
Good evening, Council. Thank you. My name is Kyle Weber. I'm an associate planner with the Planning Division. The item before you tonight requests the council to approve amendments to five of the seven specific plans for the city, which is a project aimed at achieving consistency with all other city-certified documents. The specific plans that are being amended are the Ranch of San Clemente specific plan, To La Gua specific plan, Forest Ranch, Marblehead Inland, and Marblehead Coastal specific plan. Next slide, please. Okay. The amendments presented to you tonight are part of the work program to update the city's planning documents to be consistent and compatible with the Centennial General Plan, coastal land use plan, and municipal code as required by state law. So, achieving consistency between the general plan, LUP, zoning ordinance, and specific plans is considered a high-level priority project identified in the strategic implementation program based on city council direction. The specific plan documents are proposed to be modified to address any updates that have occurred to the general plan and all amendments to any city-certified documents adopted by the city council. So, within the last seven to eight years, a number of general plan and zoning code amendments have been adopted by council, which are not currently reflected in the specific plan documents, and thus, this project aims to correct that. Next slide, please. The types of amendments proposed are best described in four separate categories. So, first, designated land uses have changed as a result of amendments to the general plan that have occurred over the years. Those general plan amendments remove some types of land uses, as well as renamed or relabeled others. So, in order to make the specific plans consistent, not only the text within the document has been updated to reflect the changes to the land uses, but also maps when the documents have been updated as well. So, a good example of this is some parcels in the Ranch of San Clemente specific plan that were designated as Neighborhood Commercial 2, or modified to be Neighborhood Commercial 1.2 during a general plan amendment. However, they were never updated in the specific plan documents. So, another example would be simply the abbreviations of zones designated as heavy and light industrial. They were never changed, they were changed in the zoning code, and now, the specific plans match those newer abbreviations. And secondly, regulations and development standards, such as the allowed density in certain zones, in the general plan and zoning code, have been modified in the past, and now, the specific plans will match those regulations and development standards. These changes also include any zoning code policies that were changed to be consistent with state and federal law regulations during staff's most recent zoning code batch amendments. And so, third, the amendments address any issues within the current text of the specific plans that may have been ambiguous to the reader, or where information may have been missing or just unclear to any members of the public, a developer, or even staff. This category of the amendments also includes improvements made to the quality and readability of the maps within the specific plans, without changing any significant information or data. Most notably would be the corrected geographical boundary of the To La Gua specific plan region. And lastly, the primary goal of this project was to maintain a focus on making the specific plans entirely consistent with our current documents. Our staff, under the direction of the planning commission, deviated from this endeavor in one major way and took this opportunity to respond to goals and policies in the general plan related to automobile service uses, which we'll discuss next. Next slide, please. Okay. So, one particular goal of the general plan is to encourage the relocation of existing automobile-related uses to industrial designated areas. And then, the general plan policy related to this goal states explicitly that the city permits development in automobile-related services and repair in certain business park districts within the specific plan areas, as long as such uses are consistent with overall city characters specified in the urban design element of the general plan. So, over the last year, staff worked alongside the planning commissioners to develop policies, development standards, and determine the various types of uses that would be permitted within the Ranch of San Clemente and To La Business Park areas. During three separate study sessions and one public hearing, staff and the commissioners developed new definitions for various types of automobile-related uses and created a comprehensive list of development standards and regulations that will permit such uses in the business park areas, while allowing the sitting to retain oversight that ensures any probable issues with introducing these new types of uses to the area will not cause any detrimental effects to any existing or future uses. So, aside from working closely with the planning commission on amendments proposed within the specific plans, staff also conducted five separate community meetings held for the public, to where we discussed the city's pending changes to the specific plans. We were able to communicate with the community members at these meetings, and we were also available to answer any questions since these meetings up until this point, either through email, phone calls, or even at the public counter. Next slide, please. With that, staff recommends to city council to determine the amendments are exempt from SEQA for certain two SEQA guidelines stated within the provided resolution, and to make a motion to adopt the resolution provided as attachment one of staff's report approving specific plan amendments, 21-229, as presented in the supplemental exhibits of the resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions or review specific topics in the exhibits.
Before we go to questions, do we have any comments?
No.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, close the public hearing. Any questions for staff on this item?
Yeah, I just have one on the automobile issue on the uses for those areas. Is there a plan to at all change current automobile usage areas zoning in the rest of San Clemente and try and move those out to the To Lega Business Park and the Rancho San Clemente Business Park? Or are those still maintained in their respective areas?
Thank you, Councilmember Enmeyer. Adam Tamian, Deputy Community Development Director. The city has, through the general plan update, has already taken the steps to prohibit future automobile-related uses in certain areas, specifically along El Camino Real. Existing uses are allowed to be maintained, but there is a certain trigger of expansion that they would not be able to be permitted for. And thus, the work that we're doing in this specific plan amendment is geared to encourage those uses to relocate from El Camino Real over time as those businesses grow, or if new businesses come in. So that, the other work related to this encouragement has already been completed elsewhere in town.
So encouragement, meaning they can expand if they move up to the business park and they can't if they stay where they are?
Yeah.
What other things are we offering to encourage?
That is primarily the mechanism. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Considering you all live in those areas, I don't, but I'll still make the motion.
And I think we just have to approve one. We don't have to read it, right? Is that right, City Clerk? Because it's only have to read the second part, the resolution? I'm just trying to help you.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do.
The resolution, yes.
Yeah, so my motion is adopt a resolution 22-44, resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, approving specific plan amendment 21-229, updating specific plans for To Lega, Rancho, San Clemente, Marblehead Inland, Marblehead Coastal, and Forester Ranch for consistency with the Centennial General Plan, Zoning Code, and Coastal Land Use Plan.
And that includes the adoption of the staff recommendation for first part as well?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's a motion by Councilmember James, second by Mayor Pro Tem Knoblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Next item on the agenda, code amendment, amending various sections of the San Clemente Municipal Code to implement the city's six-cycle housing element, project number 22-369.
And I'm going to open the public hearing. Any comments?
No public comments.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Good evening. My name is Sarah Toma. I'm the senior planner with the Planning Division. Today, I'll be presenting to you the zoning amendments implementing of the six-cycle housing element update. Next slide, please. So just wanted to give you a quick background. In accordance with state law, the city's six-cycle housing element, which is for the reporting period of 2021, 2029, adopted by council on September 20th and certified by HCD on October 12th, identifies various programs the city will pursue to promote opportunities for new housing for all economic levels and those with special needs. Included among these programs are the six zoning ordinances before you today. Next slide, please. The amendments implement a number of housing element programs, and they are as follows. Ordinance number one, under density bonus, implements program four of the housing element, which requires an update to the city's density bonus to comply with recent changes in state law. Ordinance number one accomplishes this by incorporating the state density bonus law by reference, which will ensure the City of San Clemente Municipal Code remains current when future changes in state law occur. Ordinance number two, emergency shelter parking requirements, implements program 14 of the housing element, which requires an amendment to the city's SB 2 overlay zone parking requirements to comply with AB 139. Ordinance number two accomplishes this program by requiring an emergency shelter to provide parking at a ratio of not less than one space for every employee in the largest shift. Ordinance number three, ADUs and junior ADUs, implements program eight of the housing element, which requires an amendment to comply with recent changes in the state ADU laws. The ordinance number three accomplishes this program by amending the code to include new height standards, front-set-back requirements to yield to certain ADUs, and to include staff's initiated revisions intended to augment clarity for the benefit of staff and the general public. Next slide, please. Ordinance number four, the Low Barrier Navigation Center implements program 14 of the housing element, which requires an amendment to the code to update its low-barrier housing center regulations to comply with AB 101. Ordinance number four accomplishes this program by allowing the centers to be permitted by right in areas zoned for mixed use and non-residential zones where multifamily uses are allowed, consistent with state law. Ordinance number five, supportive and transitional housing, implements program 14 of the housing element, which requires the city to amend the code to comply with recent changes to state housing laws for supportive and transitional housing. Ordinance number five accomplishes the program by, one, amending the definition section of the code for supportive housing and transitional housing to comply with state law, and, two, adding a section to Chapter 17.28 of the code to allow supportive housing as a buy right use in all zones where multifamily and mixed use are permitted. And ordinance number six, and this is my last ordinance, residential care facility, implements program 14 of the housing element, which requires the city to amend the municipal code to comply with recent changes in state housing law for residential care facility. This is accomplished by amending Title V, which is business license and regulations, and Title 17, which is zoning, to update the city's regulations governing residential care facility to create a streamlined administrative approval process in accordance with state law requirements. Next slide, please. State law and the San Clemente Municipal Code requires that the Planning Commission to review and make a recommendation to the City Council on the proposed zoning amendments. And on November 16th, the Planning Commission reviewed and recommended the City Council adopt the proposed ordinances. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council, one, determine the ordinances are exempt from SEQA, and, two, adopt the six ordinances included in the agenda report as Attachment 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Any questions first?
Question of the City Attorney. The City Attorney, can these ordinances be adopted in one motion? Do we need to break them out individually?
They can be adopted by one motion, but unfortunately, the titles all need to be read.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion there.
Okay, just a moment. Any questions for staff on this, or any comments, then? I'd just like to make one comment, which is, first of all, thank you for the presentation, Cecilia. Thank you for all your work getting our housing element approved. As I've said many times before, I don't really like these mandates because they take local control almost completely away. That goes against our interest in San Clemente, I think. Because this is a town whose entire character is built on our uniqueness, and now we're being forced to comply. So my question, I guess, if I have one, is must we adopt these ordinances in order to have our housing element applied? Do we have any discretion here? Is this all part of the state mandatory program that we now are obligated to participate in?
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. Cecilia Gairdo-Daly, Community Development Director. We are required to pursuant to our housing element and state law to adopt these ordinances into our local zoning code.
Okay. All right, and presumably, please don't answer again, your voice, but presumably, we didn't, we could, our housing element might be decertified.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, I understand why, when I was speaking to you earlier today, you were just smiling and nodding.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, recognizing that these six ordinances are exempt from SEQA. I'll introduce ordinance 1740 entitled an ordinance of the City Council of San Clemente, California, amending section 17.24.070 of the San Clemente Municipal Code regarding density bonuses and other affordable housing incentives required by state law, and finding the action to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act. Part number two of my motion, I want to introduce ordinance number 1741, an ordinance of the City Council of San Clemente, California, amending section 17.56.100 of the San Clemente Municipal Code to comply with Assembly Bill 139 regarding parking requirements for emergency shelters and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Part number three of my motion, introduce ordinance number 1742, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending section 17.28.270 of the San Clemente Municipal Code governing accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units to comply with changes in state law, and finding the action to be exempt from SEQA. Part four, introduce ordinance 1743, entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending various provisions of the San Clemente Municipal Code to ensure consistency with state law regarding low-barrier navigation centers and finding the action to be exempt from SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. Part five, introduce ordinance 1744, entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, amending various provisions of the San Clemente Municipal Code to ensure consistency with state law regarding supportive and transitional housing, and finding the action to be exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. And part six, introduce ordinance number 1745, an ordinance of the City Council of San Clemente, California, amending various provisions of the San Clemente Municipal Code regarding residential care facilities, and finding the action to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion is Mayor Pro Tem Knoblock, and the second is Councilmember Enmeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
No, I haven't voted yet.
I'm sorry.
So I will vote aye, but this is an example of the tyranny of one-party rule in Sacramento and what the Democratic Party of this state is doing to our city. So, but with that, to keep us out of trouble, I will vote aye.
All right, next item.
Next item on the agenda, Historic Property Preservation Agreement 22-297, 212, Avenida
And do we have any comments?
No public comments.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Do we have a PowerPoint?
Okay, good evening, Mayor and members of council. David Creo, Assistant Planner. Before we present the two Historic Property Preservation Agreement applications we have before us tonight, I'm providing a brief background on the MILZAC program. Next slide. The program was adopted by the State of California in 1976. It allows cities to reduce property taxes for historic properties through an agreement with property owners, and in return, property owners agree to complete certain improvements by a specific year. The city has decided to name these agreements Historic Property Preservation Agreements. Other cities, you'll find the name of MILZAC agreements or MILZAC contracts. This agreement is a minimum tenure term contract which automatically renews annually, and either the city or owner may provide a notice of nonrenewal, where the contract then concludes at the end of the current tenure term. If the contract is terminated before the current tenure term, the owners charge a penalty fee of 12.5% of the property's full value. During the life of the contract, the city is required by state to conduct site inspections every five years to ensure the property is in compliance with the contract. Prior to the inspections, owners must pay an inspection fee to the Planning Division to cover the cost of inspections. So in summary, the MILZAC program allows the city to grant property tax relief, and in return, property owners complete improvements by a specific year. Next slide. So the first Historic Property Preservation Agreement before us is for 212 Avenida Rosa. Next slide. Here's the front view of the two-story home screened with some landscaping. I will note here that the contract requires landscaping to be trimmed to improve the visibility of the home from the street. The residence was built in 1928 and designed by prominent San Clemente architect Virgil Westbrook. Westbrook was also the architect for the Ole Hansen Beach Club and the Easley Building at the top of Del Mar. The property was added to the city's list of historic resources for its construction during the city's period of significance, its Spanish colonial revival architecture, and association with Virgil Westbrook. The property has obtained eight building permits, two of which were for a first and second-story addition in 2005 and 2013. Next slide. So after visiting the site with the city's historic preservation consultant, the historical society, and the property owners, staff compiled a list of 18 tasks to be completed by 2029. The estimated property tax savings with the MILZAC starting next year are $5,407. And I'll say this is an amount that was provided by the Orange County Tax Assessor's Office. Next slide. So the following slides are examples of tasks to be completed within the initial tenure term. Here, the task is to address site drainage and ensure water is directed away from the building. The image here shows water stains, which is an indicator that water is not properly being drained. Next slide. Here's an image of an original wood window. This task requires original wood windows and doors to be repaired and repainted. Next slide. This image shows a side yard fence, which must be repaired or replaced with a compatible barrier. Next slide. With that, staff recommends that the City Council approve the Historic Property Preservation Agreements. And this concludes my presentation. We have the applicant and staff available for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I have one quick question, staff, if I could. My question is on the, just curious, on the foundational vents that were the original clay tiles that are now broken, when that gets replaced, will there be a fire screen vent with the mesh screen, or will it still be open? The report says that they'll be, it'll be repaired and replaced. I'm just curious if there's going to be a mesh, fire prevention-type mesh that you would normally get on a vent on an upper part? Do you happen to know?
Yeah, at that point, when the property owner is ready to address that item, we'll consult with the Building Division to see if that's a requirement.
You don't know for sure?
There is a special section of the building code related to historic properties, and those types of screens are generally required to the extent that they can be installed in a historic property without affecting the character-defining pictures they would...
I don't think it's probably a huge fire issue. I was just curious, so...
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for answering. I can support your motion if you want to make it, Jim.
So I have a motion to, this is 212 Avenida Rosa, just making, getting this right. Adopt Resolution Number 22-45, entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, approving Historic Property Preservation Agreement 22-2297 for the property located at 212 Avenida Rosa.
Second.
All right, motion is Councilmember James, second is Mayor Pro Tem Knoblock. And I just note, I did speak with Larry Culberson, President of the Historical Society, and he supports, my understanding is they support this. So with that...
I have one question. Who's the, is the family here?
Oh, there, there.
The lady?
I'm the owner.
Thank you.
Beautiful home.
Beautiful. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thanks for agreeing to do this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous.
Okay. Final...
Thank you, ma'am.
Final public hearing this evening, Historic Property Preservation Agreement 22-338, 217 Esplanade.
Any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
So here's the second Historic Property Preservation Agreement. So here's the second Historic Property Preservation Agreement for 217 Esplanade. Next slide. Here's the front view of the home from the sidewalk. The two-story home was built in 1927 within the city's period of significance and was added to the city's list of designated historic resources for its association with Ole Hansen, the Ole Hansen period of development. The property was, has obtained two building permits, one for main sewer line work in 1987, and one for replacement of the water main in 2022 this year. Next slide. Like the previous application, staff compiled a list of 15 tasks with the assistance from the city's historic preservation consultant. These tasks are due early into the tenure term by 2026, since these tasks are relatively minor when compared to the previous application. The estimated property tax are 26,000, 26,188, higher than the previous application due to this property's higher value. Next slide. Here are some examples of the tasks. This is an image of the crossface opening. The owners are required to cover crossface openings throughout the home where applicable. Next slide. Like the previous property, site drainage must also be addressed. Next slide. And here's a front yard retaining wall, which slightly tilts towards the sidewalk. At the moment, it's not a safety hazard, however, cracks must be repaired and drainage must be installed. Next slide. Per the staff report, staff recommends that the City Council approve the Historic Property Preservation Agreement, and we also have the property owners and staff available for any questions. This concludes my presentation.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2246 entitled of Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, approving Historic Property Preservation Agreement 22338 for the property located at 217 Esplanade.
Second.
Okay. Motion is Councilmember Enmeyer. Second is Mayor Protim Noblock. Any comments? No?
Is the family here?
Oh, there's.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's unanimous. Again, I should note that Historical Society supported this as well, so, congrats.
Next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance number 1739, Parking Recreational Vehicles on City Streets and Alley's, and we do have two speaker cards on this item.
Okay. Let's hear the comments.
Stephen Hill and Amanda Q.
So Stephen, Amanda's here, but Stephen.
Stephen.
Stephen Q?
No, Stephen Hill and Amanda Q. Stephen Hill?
[laughing] All right. Okay.
I'm glad that this is the second reading for this ordinance, 10.28.230, is being amended since there was a concern regarding the wording of this ordinance when I was trying to promote safety of children who would be playing at Maxwell Park and attending Los Palmas Elementary. And it was a collaborative effort at that time with, you know, Appleson United High School District Deputy Superintendent, Trustee Hamichuk, Principal Barrosa, OCSD, and the assistance of former Mayor Gene James. And I'm glad that the wording is being changed and that the only round trip extensions may be issued, and the commencement of the unloading period must be occurred no sooner than 24 hours after termination of the loading period. And that was really imperative because, you know, people were taking advantage of the situation where they would get an extension, and because that wording wasn't in the right place, and they were calling up OCSD to get an extension, which allowed them to get a 36-hour extension because the wording was a little bit off. So I'm glad this is being corrected and, or being modified to, you know, have a good understanding of this ordinance. Let's see, anything else? I also wanted a, I guess I'll bring it up in a different city council meeting, but I think this is, this will benefit our understanding of this ordinance, and thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Cabral, go ahead.
I'm moved to approve, adopt ordinance number 1739 entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending section 10.28.230B of San Clemente Municipal Court relating to parking recreational vehicles on city streets and alleys.
Second.
Okay, we've got Councilmember Cabral with the motion. Second is Mayor Protim Noblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of allocating a donation to the Flying Leathernecks Historical Foundation.
Do we have a staff presentation, or?
At your last, I'm going to make it up, as I go along. Your last city council meeting, the city council received a presentation from a retired general, and he mentioned that there is a project in its fledgling stages and phases, really envisioned for the Irvine Great Park.
Right.
And he had mentioned that the, his group, a nonprofit group, would be building a memorial to flyers, Marines, and that he had mentioned their goal was a $10 million goal, and that the marketing effort for that undertaking had not yet started, but he, he made a compelling presentation that caught the attention of no fewer than three members of the city council, and at that time, a motion was made, second and third, for this item to be presented to the city council, for you to consider the opportunity to make a donation toward that project. Again, about a $10 million vision. Again, the fundraising has not yet been undertaken in earnest. The, the report is prepared to facilitate the city council to make a donation of an amount, in an amount to be determined. Staff's recommendation is that you await the opportu, the consideration of next year's fiscal budget so that you can consider this. It wasn't a funding request so much as it was a motion and an interest of the city council to, to set aside some funds to donate to that project. We would recommend that you take up consideration of that suggestion in the context of the budget so that you can give relative weight to the unending number of worthwhile and arguably similar, not identical, meritorious proposals that exist among your nonprofit community. And so that you would look at this in comparison to the other great things that are going on in the city and decide how and at what level you would like to fund this and/or other meritorious and noble undertakings by your community.
All right. Any discussions on this?
I have a little bit, you know, Brigadier General Mike Aguilar is a great guy, I've known him for, for a long time. With that being said, it would be my recommend, I like staff's recommendation, I think we should table this until we see that this is actually going to occur, and what it looks like. And, you know, we still, we really don't have an ask from them, and it's, it's, it's a venue that's going to happen outside the city. It doesn't mean we, we won't give money to it, but I would, I would take a wait and see, and particularly, I like what the city manager says about putting it into our budget process.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion or anything?
I would just add to this that I think it might be prudent in our budget-making process that we have some sort of give-it-away fund, that when we come across these things throughout the year, we have money set aside for specific meritorious endeavors, but going about it piecemeal, my fear is, you know, my own bleeding heart, anyone comes in here with a proposition, I will be moved and compelled to open up my wallets to them, and the city's wallets to them, which.
I think that's how that's ended up on the agenda here.
Yeah, yeah. So I like the idea of, yeah, considering it when we get to that budgetary process.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, and of course, in, in response to Councilmember Enmeyer, I would say the proper venue for that is to go through the Human Affairs Committee because once a year, they, they look at those type of things, and, and particularly as it relates to Community Development Block Grants. So I think we have a, I think we have a venue to do that, and I don't think we should get out in front of the Human Affairs Committee.
I, I think we actually have, we actually do have money for council. Yeah, we have a small amount of money, but, so we can, we can talk about that during the budgeting, too. So, okay, so we have the motion to accept the staff recommendation and a second from Mayor Protim Noblock. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous.
Next item on the agenda, Assembly Bill 2449, Open Meetings and Virtual Council Meeting
I'm prepared to make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
So, do I need to read it, other than receive and file?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Before you do that, on this note, and we talked about this interim city manager, how, what's the process for how we might adjust our council meetings here? Because we have found ourselves in these situations where you don't have closed session, and we're starting at five, and then it's sort of awkward. Is there a way to adjust that and maybe go back to, with, with council approval, back to the closed session at five? That way, we have the sort of the predictability. We can still keep our, I think we did a good job of scheduling public hearings, but we have this closed session that, that doesn't sort of work, I think, sort of in the middle of the meeting.
Thank you for the participation. I'm going to work with the city clerk to prepare an item for you as soon as December 20th, no later than the January meeting, to present to you a staff's recommendation to, frankly, to tighten up space, to enhance the convenience to the community so that they can more predictably know when you would be taking items up. So I know that we had a recent matter that required then-mayor James to call a timeout for an extended period of time. If we tighten this up, we would start, as, as staff envisions it, for city council consideration. You would start the meeting timely, close session at five, return for six o'clock meeting start, and the public hearings would be scheduled to occur as soon as 6:00 PM. That would give you the opportunity to proceed through the meeting uninterrupted.
Okay. Okay. That sounds good.
Look for that.
We'll look forward to that in January?
As early as, I'm not, I don't want to speak for the city clerk, she'll be doing all the heavy lifting. As soon as the December meeting, no later than the January meeting.
And now, for this one, we do have a motion from Councilmember James and a second for Mayor Protim Noblock to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Unanimous.
Oral Communications, Part Two, we have no speaker cards.
I may make a motion to, oh, can I say one thing, Mr. Mayor? I think we should adjourn in memory of 2,390 souls that were lost on December the 7th, 1941, by the unprovoked attack by the Empire of Japan upon the United States of America. Can we do that?
Yes, we can, we can, we can do that. Do we need any other support for that, or is it just a parliamentary thing? Okay. Yeah, okay. Now, that's a great idea. Just spent Saturday night on the USS Midway down in San Diego with my son Rico, thinking about, about those, those soldiers. So I think that's a great idea.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn in the memory of 2,390 American souls lost to the Japanese on December the 7th, 1941. That'll be 81 years ago tomorrow. Do an adjourned regular meeting to be held on December the 13th, 2022, at 4:00 PM for the purpose of conducting closed session. The next regular council meeting will be held on December 20th, 2022. Part one of the regular business meeting will commence at 5:00 PM, and the closed session will begin at 6:00 PM. Part two of the business meeting will commence at 7:00 PM. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located 910 Cali Negotiables, second floor, San Clemente, California.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.